Special meeting to order, March 3rd, 2025, special meeting, City Council Priority Setting Workshop. And I believe we have a staff, oh, let's do local first.
Councilmember Fuwen?
Here.
Councilmember Mohan?
Here.
Councilmember Wong?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Moore?
Present.
Mayor Chow?
Here. So since it's a special meeting, we don't have a public comment on non-agenda item, so we will go...
Mayor, there is no oral communications for this, there is a public comment for the one agenda item.
For the item, oh, okay. So we will hear the staff presentation first, and then do council questions, and then we go to the public comment on this agenda item.
Mayor, if I may, so there is public comment built into the presentation right before council will go off to rank the projects.
Okay, sounds good. So, yeah, Tina, you can start.
Sure. Before I start, I would like to, I would like to have City Manager Pamela Wu say a few words to kick us off.
Thank you, Tina. Good evening, City Manager Pamela Wu. I wanted to thank council for taking the time today on a Monday afternoon to spend five o'clock, your dinnertime with us right now, to consider this very important project, the City Work Program. So as you remember, we started this journey two weeks, uh, two years ago, to do this two-year City Work Program, so we have a chance to come and talk to you, and present to you, and kind of walk you through step by step how the current projects are. And we have in the past provided those updates and also commitment to you. And just wanted to kind of take a moment to acknowledge all of the hard work that council has done, and also the city work, city staff that has done to make this two week, uh, two-year anniversary a really successful one. Want to kind of put in a celebratory tone to where we are. And also just want to also take a moment to align council's goal, your visioning process, your strategic planning today, and then just understand that by identifying your focus area, that will really articulate the City Work Program so that the city team can remain behind you and by implementing and completing these processes. So we're focusing on the City Work Program this month, and this will be the first time that council gets to relook at your goals, look at the projects, and will come back as a step two potentially, to provide the estimated funding and also staffing resource for you to consider. Next month in April, we'll be doing a similar process on the CIP, so that coming May and June timeframe, when you're considering the entire budget, you have all the bells and whistles and all the information for you to make an informed decision to adopt a budget. So slightly different than what we have done in the past, we're not asking council to adopt the City Work Program. Instead, we're asking you to look at your work projects and identify and prioritize, and to finalize the list, so that we can come back to you in the May and June timeframe for this new approach. So I want to thank you for your indulgence and also your patience with us as we're embarking on this new journey. So with that, I'll turn the floor back to Tina, so she can walk you through tonight's presentation.
Thank you, Pamela. Hello and good evening, everyone. So as Pamela mentioned, we started this process to, a few months ago, where we laid out an approach for this upcoming two-year Work Program and Council Prioritization Process. And it's my pleasure to be here tonight, to be leading this with all of you. And I'd like to start also by thanking council for all of your partnership and great work through this endeavor. I'd also like to recognize and thank, of course, City Manager Pamela Wu for her leadership, our executive team and staff for all of the work that goes into this in carrying out one of the most, if not the most, critical initiative that we take on in public sector, which is identifying, adopting, and implementing council priorities. There are some handouts in front of you today, and there were also some desk items that were issued just right before the meeting, which include the rankings that we received from some of you ahead of the meeting, thank you, and the form that you will use later on this evening to rank the projects, and of course, my slide deck that I'll be using today. And because these are council priorities, we thought we'd start with you and the role that you play in, in city governance. Cupertino is a council manager form of government, and the mayor and vice mayor and council members, you take on a significant responsibility. You have to maintain effective working relationships with many audience, including the residents, the community groups, press, other governmental agencies, other elected officials, businesses in Cupertino, nonprofit organizations, and many more. And of course, you know, an effective working relationship with the city manager and staff is also critical to a satisfying career on the city council. So together, the council and manager in this form of government make up the team that make everything happen in the city. And what does that mean exactly? I'll touch on that briefly as we go through, as we kick off the workshop, but let me just go over the agenda for tonight. This is also, again, in front of you as a printed out paper. So there are six milestones for tonight's conversation. It seems like a lot to accomplish in a couple of hours that we have together, but we have been organized so far in getting to where we are today, and I'm confident we'll do just fine tonight as well. So there's going to be a couple of opportunities, as you can see on this agenda, for council interaction and direction. These would be the validation of council goals and acceptance of the focus areas and the strategic vision, as Pamela mentioned. We then will break for the rankings, and we'll come back for an extended discussion on the ranked list at the very end. The beginning portion is mostly me talking, so I will keep that brief. And, you know, also, I don't mean to be rude, but we will move quickly because we've covered some of this information before, and I'd rather you have the time to discuss the priorities and rankings later on. So let's kick off. We'll talk about what makes for an effective council manager form of government, why it's important, what could affect this, and some of the best practices that are out there. Most of you may have heard all of this before, so I, I will breeze through these. And I know we have shared these materials in the past as well to council. So if we were to oversimplify things, because running a city is simple, right? Okay, jokes aside, this really is the essence of what city governance looks like. The yellow circle is council, and the blue circle is the manager. Council sets the priority and vision for the city, and the city manager implements the policy and directs the administrative operations and staff. This typically operates on the philosophy that elected, elected officials such as yourselves, you're better able to make community value judgments on behalf of residents and translate these values into policy direction. This is the what in this diagram. This is also based on the belief that professional staff are best able to determine the how of implementing policies and delivering day-to-day services. Both of these roles are obviously very closely related, and it's the city manager's responsibility to coordinate between both realms to assure that the effective delivery of service is consistent with the city council direction. So in this image here, you can see the boundaries are super sharp and crisp. I, I think we all agree healthy boundaries are, you know, are good in any situation, but this is often the dichotomy, right? The separation of these responsibilities. And in real life, oftentimes, there's a lot of gray, or in this case, trying to be green. And it takes work to understand and respect these boundaries, to minimize the blob-like formation we just saw. Having clear boundaries will help establish the most effective governance for, for all of us here, and a positive working relationship, of course. So we can all work as a team and avoid swimming in the blob. Here are a few things to consider as we try to establish or continue the best possible team environment. It's, the list is, of course, not, this good relationship is not to be taken for granted. The work of what all of you do is not easy, right? That's an understatement. So I just want to pause and appreciate everything that you do, the time that you have taken out of your lives to, to, to help run the city. And a lot of things can get in the way, right? There could be differing philosophies, there could be challenging issues, there could be external pressures, so kudos for you for taking this on. An effective relationship can maximize organizational performance, organizational reputation, value to the community, and community pride and confidence as well. And why is it important to the city manager? Because of all of the reasons I just listed. And there are definitely some best practices, so let's take a look at them. By the way, this is all from ILG, the Institute of Local Government, so you've definitely seen these before. So first and foremost, trust above all, like just in any relationship, the council and manager relationship must be based on trust. There can be obstacles, but they can be overcome if there's mutual trust. Understanding and respecting the city council manager form of governance. Of course, having policy direction is, is really important for city manager to carry out that policy direction. There are differences between the community perspective and the professional and technical perspective. It doesn't mean one's right or wrong, it just is helpful to understand and appreciate the views of another. And of course, you know, establishing clear communication, establishing the preference of communication. And the next one is, while no one likes mistakes, they're unavoidable in the context of organizational life, and cities are complex organizations, dealing with quite a variety of services, and honest mistakes do happen, so reacting to them appropriately is good. And finally, you know, taking our roles seriously, but not ourselves. So your role as a council member is already tough, so find ways to, to, to not take it so seriously. Bonus tip that was provided by ILG is to invest time in workshops like these, like today, because discussions like this really allow for thoughtful conversations of working together, of developing a strategic vision and goals for the city outside of the context of discussing specific issues like we do. And through this exercise we've done in the past in similar format, it's really brought the council and staff together to work on the prioritization, and we hope to continue building that momentum with tonight's discussion. Okay, with that, I'm going to breeze through this next one too pretty quickly, because we talked about a lot of this at the January study session. Here again is the approach and timeline that we laid out, and we are here now at the March workshop. And as council identifies the priorities, some context is helpful. Again, this is a refresher, we've already delved into this at the January study session. So here, the council priorities are at the very top. However, the foundation of what staff does is focusing on the day-to-day operations, which takes up majority of the time and resources. And the middle tier is things that come up here and there, or that we're mandated to do. And again, so this one is allocation of management staff, you've seen this as well, and the unforeseen challenges, it shows 5%, but sometimes can be much bigger than that. However, the small orange sliver City Work Program is part of the bigger pie that we work on daily. And here it is again, you know, important to have, keep the focus on only the top priorities that, again, aren't outsized given available resources, coming to a consensus on the process and how the list will be prioritized. We've, we've done that, and understanding that there are limited resources to work with and making sure priorities are being implemented and that there's progress being made. I wanted to just pause for a quick minute here to celebrate some of the accomplishments from the previous Work Program. A few of them, three of them are listed here. So council adopted amendments to the Commission Membership and Commissioners Handbook in March last year. Most recent commissioner recruitment process was updated with new application process and new criteria questions, and this was just completed last month, I believe. In 2024, we also developed intergenerational engagement programs, like the Gen Connect and Disco at Dusk to facilitate fun, engaging opportunities across generations. And some of these are now continued on an ongoing basis. In October, council adopted the ALPR policy to deploy cameras to further enhance public safety throughout Cupertino. In July, council unanimously adopted the Council Cupertino Vision Zero Action Plan. This plan, again, advances the city's effort to achieve transportation safety improvements throughout the city. And we also supported the County Sheriff's Office Initiative in securing a grant for retail theft suppression in commercial corridors. Okay? I skipped through it, but we're now going into developing, confirming the strategic vision for the city. So having a strategic vision is really important, because it provides a purpose and direction for any organization. A strategic vision enables cities to implement long-term planning, not as the profession, but, you know, thinking beyond the immediate concerns and plan for longer-term challenges and opportunities. The vision can be flexible enough so that if and when circumstances change, we can maintain a clear and uniform overall direction. And this is what makes the organization adaptable. So we're obviously looking at other examples, but I wanted to offer a framework for us today with some of the components that we already have in place to see if we can get to that, you know, that, that next step into developing that longer-term plan for the city. And we'll continue looking at other models to refine it in the future. And I wanted to thank the council members who are also doing some of that and looking at models and examples that could help us define as we move forward. So again, taking what we have, you are very familiar with this, this triangle now. We have this in place, and we took this as a starting point. And going forward, we also have, you know, the, I'm going to go back. This top portion of the triangle is where the council priorities, AKA the strategic, the visioning, the direction lives, right? This is where your goals are. This is where the Work Program comes out of. So let's revisit the council goals. I'm going to work my way through it, and then we'll pause at the end of this section for council to, to consider some of the options that I'm presenting here. So you're all familiar with the five goals. This is also presented to you in a handout today. So council adopted these goals in 2020, and most of them, you know, they're, they're still, they still make sense for the city. I also wanted to take the projects that we have received, the proposed projects we have received from all of you, and try to categorize them the way that you have aligned the projects with the specific goal, and see how they kind of fall, right, so under each goal. So I'm going to go through that list. So under public engagement and transparency, these were the projects that council you have, you know, you checked the box for this goal, for this proposed project. Similarly, for transportation, these were the ones that fell under transportation, based on how you indicated. The quality of life, this one's getting a little busy. Same for sustainability and fiscal strategy, a little busy slide here, because there were a lot of projects that kind of fell under this. Housing, there were a few under housing. So here, you know, kind of doing this exercise and having the conversations we've had so far with you on this topic, and just in general, you know, what comes up as, as we're all, you know, leading the city is, in addition to goals, we wanted to bring a little bit more definition to the strategic framework. And here are the proposed focus areas that are important to, you know, the city manager, but I also think, you know, they're, they're also important to council. We've heard this loud and clear. And think of these as a subset of your council goals, to encapsulate items that may not quite fall cleanly within the goals that are identified, but they're definitely a priority for the city. And even if they weren't, even if we were able to tie these to a goal, focus areas can be a little bit specific, but more flexible. They can shift and change every one to three years, given what the focus might be. And the goals are a little bit more broad, they're more longer-term, typically five-plus years, as you can see, ours have been. And for the most part, you know, they make sense, and they don't, they don't need to move and be flexible so much. Again, the, given the priorities emerging now, the city manager needs to adopt these as focus areas, even if they're not defined as a goal. So just stay with me, I've got a few more slides to walk you through this. And then, as you saw in the little triangle, right, another strategic or directional component of the equation is the City Work Program, or council priorities. So together, these components help align the focus or the energy of everything the city does. And I've been thinking a lot about this framework, and I wanted to zoom into just this little triangle at the top. So this is the smallest but the mightiest tip. I think we've all learned that. And this is what holds all of the strategic components, just like we talked about. This is where the council focuses your energy on, the what piece that we talked about earlier, right? And the more and more I think about it, the more it started to look like a prow of a ship or a boat. So if you're a sailor, if you like to spend time on the ocean, you'll appreciate this analogy. So the front pointy part of a vessel or a ship is, is what this triangle to me looks like. This is what determines the direction, and this is where the vision is. The rest of the vessel can follow, right, and will follow. The engine room is in the back, everyone's busy making sure the engine works and engine's running, but the prow is where we're going. U.S. cap, cap, U.S. council are the captains of this ship, if this organization was a ship. You're at the helm, you're steering it in the right direction. And any slight change in this direction, even a degree or two, can really make a difference in terms of what destination we reach. So this is the setting the strategic direction. This is where we're getting to. And in the next slide, I will show you almost like a cross-section of this little triangle, and this is the framework that we're presenting to you today. Again, the strategic framework that incorporates council's high-level goals, the city's focus areas, and the little white triangles at the bottom, consider these your top projects or the City Work Program. And everything tactical, operational, is below the line. You don't even see it. This is just that top strategic triangle. So the goals at the top, they are broad, they persist, and then the subset of the goals are the, the focus areas, generally very specific and can change every one to three years, and then the Work Program projects. This is your strategic vision. The one other thing, and there's a little green one number on this slide, that's because even though, you know, the goals make sense, there is sometimes confusion around one of them, which is the sustainability and fiscal strategy. It's like, which shade of green are we talking about? Trees or money? So I'm also presenting a second one for you to consider. Our recommendation is to separate the two goals as shown here. And that way, there's less guesswork and confusion around which item could go under which green. And, you know, council can obviously take a moment to discuss and confirm which one you like, the first or the second. But our recommendation would be to split those two into this framework here. So why don't we take 15 minutes? This is your first opportunity to discuss and let us know your preference, and then we'll move on to the bulk of tonight's conversation, which is the prioritization that I know you're all waiting for.
So I think what Tina meant is, we're not taking a recess just yet. Don't get too excited. This would be the first, I mean, given that this is a different layout, as you can tell, this is a more of an interactive session that we're hoping to have a conversation with you. And, and as I mentioned, as Tina mentioned, that we can't really successfully craft a City Work Program unless council has aligned your strategic planning and goals. So as a first stop, we would like you to reaffirm or confirm that these are still, number one, your goals as a council, or there are something that you would like to refine, add, delete, and whatnot, and this is the perfect opportunity. So mayor, if you want to start having a five-minute discussion with your fellow council members, or maybe before we get too far into the program, I believe, this high-level decision-making is crucial before we proceed.
Yeah, and I would just add that part of our recommended action for tonight is for you to adjust or reaffirm, and then, of course, confirm the framework. So we presented two options. This discussion could simply be which one you like, or, you know, other items, as you please.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Great slides. So I think I like Vice Mayor's model from the last meeting, where we would just take turns, so I don't have to keep checking whose hand is up. So why don't we start from Councilmember Wong, and then Fuwen, and Mohan, and then Vice Mayor? Councilmember Wong.
Are we trying to reaffirm those goals that are up here on slide number two here?
Any comment you have?
I, I think the general comment is that, you know, when we were walking through the campaign season, there was a sense in the city that it was really important that we get our fiscal house in order. We have multiple issues from reduction in taxes, exodus of population, aging population, and there's a general belief that whatever we can do, we need to be more efficient, so that we keep our tax base lower, we don't tax our residents anymore, and that we use our money responsibly. But at the same time, like all good taxpayers, they don't want to pay money, but they want great services, and everybody expects a level of service, and, and they're looking for streamlined capabilities. They want reduced friction, and if, if we're doing our jobs, what we're doing is we're making our lives easier. They might not appreciate it, but we're making their lives easier. And, and that's everything from fighting back against bike lanes, rain, lane reductions, making things easier for people to get around. It's important for people to be able to, you know, build a house, do a remodel, do it in the most efficient way that they can, apply for a permit as a business owner, trying to reduce regulatory frameworks. So, so I think that's, that's kind of the sentiment in terms of the last election. But it's only as good as the last election, but, but I throw that out there, because I think that's, you know, a lot of the things that we're hearing from the community, sometimes it's conflicting. Some voices are louder than others, but, but they want a good quality of life. And, and so at the end of the day, there's something there where people want the quality of life, they want lower taxes, and they don't want to work to do it, get there. We all know that, right? But, but our jobs as public servants, and servants, I say that not lightly, is, is to reflect that. And so if you hear me advocate anything more emotionally or more aggressively than others, that's where I'm coming from today. So I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. Councilmember Fuwen.
So I think in, in terms of the ask that's being made of us, I, I generally agree with the direction that staff have tried to chart for us here. And I think I would tend toward your second slide in terms of splitting out, you know, this fiscal strategy, so that it's a little clearer. It does seem to be something that has come from all of us, and that is top of mind for everybody in the community, no matter where you happen to sit on the political spectrum.
Councilmember Mohan?
Yeah, thank you, Tina. So we are asked to confirm the city's strate, this is on, right? Strategic vision. And I agree with the, the goals that you have laid out, and I'm appreciative of the fact that you split up the sustainability and fiscal strategy. That was always a little confusing, and although when you thought about it, you said, ah, okay, is it fiscal sustainability and fiscal strategy, or is it environmental sustainability and fiscal strategy? So I'm glad you split it, that makes it a lot clearer. And, and looking at the goals in general, I mean, this is what a city should be focusing on. I cannot think of any major goal that we have left out. Public engagement and transparency, and I don't know if this is in order of priority, but it's not. But, but regardless, public engagement and transparency shows up first, and I think that really is the most important thing for a city to do. And so whether it was intended that way or not, it does make sense. Transportation, housing, quality of life, this is what we should all be engaged in doing. We've made, we've reached some major milestones in, in the housing area, a lot of it, and we hear from the public all the time that many actions that we take regarding housing is not in our control. Much of the, much of what we have to do is sort of handed down from Sacramento, and we sort of feel a sense of helplessness in, in many areas. But, you know, it is what it is, and just the fact that we came up with the certified housing element and that we are working hard to sort of tweak it here and there is, is commendable, and I commend the staff for working with the council on that. Quality of life, we don't often talk about it, but I was struck by the comments that commission candidates made a few months ago. One of the questions was, why do you want to be a commissioner? And everyone, pretty much everyone said, because this is a great city, I want to make my contribution to making it even greater. So I am hopeful that the quality of life is, is alive and well, and our, our charge really is to make sure that it's even more enhanced in the days to come. So those are my initial comments, and I'm sure I'll get other chances later, so, so that's it for now, mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
How about now?
Yeah.
Okay, very good. Okay, so I, I definitely prefer this breaking out of the environmental sustainability and fiscal strategy. I'm thinking that if we were to address tourism, since the, the Super Bowl's going to be in Santa Clara next year, that would fall under fiscal strategy, I would assume? Or quality of life. Okay, and then the other one is, we have the health and safety element of our general plan, which has some regional planning, flood planning, and we have our new fire map. So where would that fall under these categories?
That will fall under the operation. That will fall under the operation. So we are working on, so CD is working on a safety element that's coming to council, if, if not this year, next year. So it's part of the ongoing operation that we're already currently working on it. However, if council would like to have heightened attention on that effort, just like what you did with the housing element, that could also go under quality of life.
Okay, so emergency preparedness would go under quality of life. So that's, that's where I get a little stuck with the, what, what types of projects would fit under the quality of life item? Or, or public engagement and transparency?
So, so the goals are loosely termed, and you brought up a good point. So emergency management, the focus area, is something that we realized that has been on many council members' mind. So if that, if you would like to see that as a separate goal, so that would be goal number seven, that focuses only on emergency management, that could be another alternative.
Okay, or alternatively, it could be a subset of either quality of life or public engagement type of thing, if we, if we wanted to just set it there? Okay, all right. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So, yeah, I think it does make sense to separate out the fiscal strategy. And then I also realize that actually, maybe most of the projects fall into multiple buckets. In, say, a bike path, you need public engagement. It affects transportation, and then it affects quality of life. And then in terms of its cost, it's fiscal strategy, whether we can afford. I think a lot of times we get advocacy groups who are advocates for one project, and when we are looking at that one, we are now looking at how much are we spending on each of these priority over the years? And, and if we don't look at that, if we are focusing on one project at a time, we really lose our whole picture. So I'm wondering, as Tina said earlier, only 5% of the staff work is in work program, which is additional thing on top of the 85%. I think 10% is work program, 5% is contingency, and then 85% is city operational. But I do wonder how much of our operational work falls in each of these five or six categories? Because a council priority from previous years becomes operational, and I think some of the operation items got dropped off, some of the operation items get carried along further for different reasons. And so are we, in terms of 85%, of the work the city are doing every year, how are we doing in terms of the strategic priority, if we can have more visibility on that? I don't know how that can be done. And also, I'm wondering about how are we allocating not only city staff in time, but our budget? I think a lot of our budget is not only the general fund we are locating this year for the work program, but also past year allocated project that's not complete. And so what are the total that's in each of these area? I'm curious if, if, if it's even possible to have that visibility. So, yeah. Thank you.
I'll take a crack at it, and then before Tina gets on, and these are all great questions from you, Mayor Chow, so, which is why we're kind of piecemealing, if you will, the approach before you, as the council, adopt a final budget. So we're putting together the city work program, we're putting together the CIP, we're also putting together the budget, different timeframe, so that they are bite-sized for you to digest. So hopefully by May, mid-May, you'll have all this information and the financial implication for prior city work programs, current city work program, and the future city work program. Not to forget, you mentioned this ongoing CIP project. So a lot of city work program have now become a CIP project. So we'll bring all of that to you, bite-sized, wise piecemealing, not tonight, but we'll have these funding implication to you, so when you're making the decision to adopt a final budget, we hope that you have all of the information to, to make a sound decision. However, I, I would like to take a moment to kind of comment on what you focus on. You're absolutely right. So a lot of projects that we have received from your priority, they touch on many different goals and priority area, as you mentioned. But you should really be looking from upside down. You should really be focusing on one goal, and then make sure that that project prioritizes that goal. For instance, public engagement transparency. We understand from the list, there's a lot of heightened attention, wanting to make sure that a community is well-informed of any decision that has been made by the council. That is one goal. How do we make sure that it happens? Yes, it will have financial implication, but that's not the goal, to be fiscally prudent. So we want to make sure that your project aligns with one goal. And then all of these projects aligns back to these six, if not seven, or how many goals that you are trying to establish. So that's what we're trying to do tonight. And as opposed to the 85%, 85% are more mandates and requirement coming from the federal administration, state mandates, or some of these city work program that, like you said, mentioned prior, that has been adopted by council to become our day-to-day. And I don't know if we can come back and tell you, okay, how do they align back to these goals? We can certainly take a deep dive. However, they are part of the city operation that has been built since 70 years ago, when the city incorporates.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, and I would just, I would just add to what Pamela said, is, you know, I'll make two points based on what you said, Mayor. So as long as the, the direction that council's providing as part of this exercise, right, the prioritization exercise, as long as each of the project correlates to or aligns with at least one goal, we're okay. If it aligns with multiple, that's fine, but it should at least be aligning with one goal, right? And then in terms of, you know, the 85%, even though it's operational, it's below this line on this diagram, the strategic vision that we're putting in place, including the proposed focus areas from city manager, all of that, all of the work, the 85%, it, it will incorporate the strategic vision, right? We're not going aimlessly, but it's just below the line in terms of being operational, but it still has that, you know, the alignment with goals and, and the strategic vision.
Yeah, thank you. So I do have one more comment regarding the content earlier about the council mayor form of government. I think what's missing, I think it's great to have overview of that, and we, it's good to understand what the city manager needs to be successful, and what's missing there, I think, is what council members need to be successful. Because we are the ultimate decision-maker of the city, so I have stressed again and again that when the staff presents one option to the council, and especially when we are being told, oh, this is a, we have a time constraint, we have to approve it, or we will lose this or that, you are putting the council in a difficult position that we are under pressure to rubber stamp. That's something that I hope we would not see often. I think it's important ICMA, the city manager's evaluation form specifically mentioned, the, there should be options presented to the council, and with appropriate person consideration now, so that the decision-maker has enough information to make decision on which option aligns with our goal. Because there could be different options with different physical impact, different public safety impact, and we are the decision-maker who are in touch with the community to weigh in which option might be best, it might be a compromise. So I hope that the council is given that information to make our decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. And I will just say that, you know, the information I provided earlier in my presentation, that all of those points are not directed just as, just at council, right? This is a mutual working relationship and good, effective work practices for city manager and council. So, and then I'm going to bring us back to where we were for this item, if we can, if there's a motion at the table to accept, I think majority of you prefer the, the second framework here. If we can make a motion and take a vote quickly so we can move forward, that would be appreciated.
So moved?
Moore, second.
Okay, let's vote.
Councilmember Frue.
Aye.
Councilmember Wuhan.
Aye.
Councilmember Wong.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Moore.
Aye.
Mayor Chow.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Excellent. Okay, with that, we're making great time. We will move forward to the fun part of the conversation. So this is, let me breeze through a couple of slides, and then we'll get to the, the break part here. So this is the portion where we will be, or you will be, not we, you will be ranking the projects, right? And as a quick refresher, here is the breakdown of the proposed projects we've received so far. This is the breakdown by department. So again, as I mentioned, again, in January, also, this seems to be concentrated right now in about two to three departments. Of course, it might change as the list is refined and finalized. I also wanted to bring another pie chart today. This is the projects that are, this is the breakdown of projects, proposed projects by size, and this is looking good right now, right? There's a good mix of small, there's a good mix of medium, and that's something to keep in mind as we, as you go on and rank the projects. I want to bring this back up quickly in front of you. This is how we organize the preliminary resource allocation. You were able to see on the, on the compiled list that we attached in the packet, you know, you were able to see what the staffing estimates and budget estimates for each of the proposed projects are looking like. Again, could change. Here's an example, this is straight out of my study session conversation with you in January, right? Focusing on, on the first one here, it looks small, the city hall item, but if we add ideas to it, or we merge it with other items, the scope can quickly change, and it can become a large project. Another thing that could happen is, you know, even though, let's say, the scope doesn't change, it remains the same, this item could become a very large operational or CIP project in the future, right? So that's, that's all right, I just want you to keep in mind. And there's, there are a few examples from the last work program, too, that have become operational after they're either completed, you know, during the two-year cycle. For example, the active transportation plan, or DOLA, or Bobertino, things that are, you know, they start as a pilot, and then they become operational, so just wanted to share that. Also, before you rank, and as we are talking about project size, here's another fun analogy of a snowball, right? Relatively small, we crafted ourselves with an action in mind. However, if you know, snowballs are meant to have a snowball effect. So when we start combining items, or, you know, add ideas, that can sometimes lead to what we call the snowball effect. And that's really tough to do when we have to pick and choose a few out of the list, and the biggest temptation can be to merge things together. So just before we know it, with the best of intentions, that small snowball at the top of the hill could become an avalanche. So both are made of snow, right, but very different, so size and composition matters. So let's keep things at the snowball at the top of the hill level as we're ranking and sorting. All right, so now I'm going to walk you through the ranking process for tonight, we're going to break in just a minute. And these are the steps, these five steps are just for the ranking process, not to be confused with the steps on the agenda. So objective, again, is to create a set, set of priorities that are, one, actionable and achievable, and two, align with the strategic goals and focus areas and the vision that we have just adopted. So number one, so staff will come on up in a second to distribute the consolidated list to, for council to review. I believe that was already included in your, in your handout as attachment F, I think it's called? Yeah. And this is what you will use to rank the projects tonight. Number two here, Mayor, you, if you would like, you can open it up for public comment before you break for the ranking. Council has also received written communications from members of the public advocating for specific projects, so you have that information as well. And then the three and number four, they're highlighted in blue here, because that's when, that's what we do during the break, in addition to grabbing food, if you would like, from, from city hall. So the, the three and four together is going to be 30 minutes. First 15 minutes, council will take this attachment F and put your rankings based on the methodology that's listed on the left of the screen. Thank you so much for working with us on coming up with this methodology in January. You all know what to do. And then, and then when the 15-minute, at the 15-minute mark, staff will collect this attachment F from you, we will go back and tally the numbers, we're going to sort them according to the highest score to the lowest score, we're going to bring it back, and then we'll continue the discussion. And that's where that, the meat of the discussion will happen, in terms of, you know, what are the list of potential priorities looking like after the rankings have taken place? So I will pause here if there's any questions on this process, otherwise, Mayor, you can open it up for public comment.
So I, at first, I think I would like to hear council, council comments in terms of what items might be merged. Should we talk about that first, before public comment?
You can have a brief conversation on that, if you like, before you rank, if that's helpful for ranking.
Yeah, it seems before we rank, if some items could be merged, we should do that before ranking, right?
Mayor Chow, we, we, we're very cautious of merging items, as there are many, many large items already. And as Tina showed earlier, right now, we're kind of in a okay, ideal balance of some large, some medium, and some small. I mean, granted, we can come back with a chart with all large, and that would be hard for staff to align our resources to carry out the implementation part of the city work program.
So there are no items the staff is recommending merging because they are really similar?
I think, yeah, that's, you're, you're raising a good point, and some of that conversation might happen after we come back with the rankings. What I also realize is if we, if, if there's a conversation on merging, then this list is not really helpful. So let's get the rankings, and then let's see where your rankings are falling, and we could have that conversation. And staff will definitely be able to help you with some of the, you know, maybe that's the step two of the technical, yes.
There is one thing I do want to clarify, and, but first, if any other council member, Councilmember Wong.
Yeah, through the mayor. I actually really like the consolidated list from 23 to 27. Can we actually go through that? Because I think that's actually a great way for us to get a overview on, on your page 20, on your presentation with this one, page 23 and 27.
23.
Your PDF, the public and council goal, public engagement and transparency, the way you list this in the, in your presentation. Go back to Slide 23. Keep going back, 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 back. Yeah, yeah, these, these are great. So, so this is a summary of all our projects that you've aggregated here, right?
The way that council has checked the box for the goals.
I, I think this is a great place to start in terms of having a discussion against each of these goals, to see if there's things to consolidate and to have the discussion against each of these slides. It's a great top-down view. Otherwise, we're going to be buried in the Excel sheet and the list, and so, like, right here, you can say, huh, right? Of, of these projects that are in here, in this council goal, what, what do we do? For example, go to transportation. Everything in transportation has nothing to do with about making my constituents' lives easier in terms of getting from point A to point B by car. Hmm, we're missing something here. Go to the next one. Quality of life, whoa, there's a lot of stuff here. Are there certain things here that you can aggregate here? So I, I think it's a great top-down view to just create the discussion points around these.
I, I think might be a good suggestion, but I would just caution us, only because a number of you have checked multiple goals for one project, so this might not be the cleanest list to work on.
No, no, but we might carry it over. You see active transportation plan shows up in quality of life and transportation and...
All of these projects are on here.
Oh, no, I know, I know. But this is a good way to see the top-down alignment to the goals.
Yeah, it's up to council, we're...
Just a suggestion.
So is there something you see that could be merged, that you might want to call out?
Uh, there are a lot of things that could be merged, but I, I get, I get assistance, I get Tina's point, the fact that some cut across different goals as well. So that's something important to look, but when I look at a top-down view on transportation, there's nothing here about, you know, improving my ability to get from point A through, to B in a car at the moment. Everything here is about slowing me down in a car. So it's a great way to take a little top view down, you know?
Councilmember Wong, would it be helpful if you use this for ranking, but use the PowerPoint slides for, you know, as you're kind of coming up with your ranks?
Oh, yeah, I would use your sheet for ranking. I'm just saying, this is a great way to create the discussion points.
Yeah. So just for that point, under transportation, adopt LOS level of service means that we would treat the amount of wait time, the amount of time people wait in an, in an intersection as a measurement for, for the accountability of traffic demand management, because, so that will affect how, yeah, the people's life when they wait in the car.
Right, the LSVMT issue that we got stuck with, exactly.
Yeah. So any other... So any other comments? Councilmember Mohan?
I think just for our action today, or for now, I think we should probably use this, only because this is what we have, we are familiar with. We looked at it for the last few, few days. So just to use your example for the transportation, Active Transportation Plan or transportation, maybe we don't think, maybe I just, I'm just using an example, so don't hold it against me. Maybe I don't think of the trans, any of those things on the transportation plan as in my top 10. So in which case, you know, that whole discussion doesn't, is not that relevant to my ranking process. So I was hoping we could just use this and then come back. There are several areas where, which lend it themselves to consolidation. And, and I don't know where, where this would be, maybe in number four, that we could discuss the consolidation aspect. Because many of us have similar items, but not exact. And I, and I get what you're saying, Tina and Pamela, that if we start consolidating just without discussion, then it becomes like the, the snowball that you showed.
Okay, any other comment? Okay, so one thing I, the, under the sustainability and fiscal strategy, there is the City Hall Seismic Safety Issue and the City Hall Retrofit. And EOC, I believe the council has already voted to add this City Hall renovation and the City Hall Annex, which include the EOC in this year's CIP program. So that means they don't need to be on the work program.
That's not true, Mayor. I'm sorry for interruption. That has not been voted on. It was part of the TBD. And a council decision at the time was to either discuss as a part of the city work program. If not, again, if it's not adopted by city work program, it will come back to council as a separate action calendar item.
No, I think, I think that was the motion we voted on.
I can certainly provide that minutes for you.
I, I sent that minutes to you already. And then that's the motion, the very first motion we voted on that day was put City Hall Annex and the City Hall Retrofit on CIP list as soon as possible. That was voted by the council. And you were referring to the summary in the minute. Summary was not the motion. The motion is the one when the council took action.
That item was never agendized for that action.
That was the TBD list, so it's, the TBD list is when we decide what we would like to agendize.
That's correct. So it would have to come back to you for a firm action to be included in the CIP. So we were coming back, we were hoping to come back to you in a study session if it's not part of the city work program prioritization process.
So those will be part of the CIP list and then we, so we do need to adopt the final CIP list. And you, so you mean that though, the, those two projects will be part of the CIP list and we, we would adopt at that time?
I'm sorry, that's not what I said. I said that the TBD decision was to have council host a study session to decide if these projects needs to go ahead.
That's not true. I think I showed the minutes to you. I think, okay. I think I emailed you the, I checked the meeting minutes very specifically. That's the motion I made. And it was adopted by the council is specifically to add it to the CIP list, not study session. And in the last council's agenda setting, I think Vice Mayor was there and we both confirmed we don't need, we don't want another study session on that. So it's...
Mayor, are you saying we can take that off the project list here?
I think we can take that off since it's already one of, two of the CIP list. So do you agree?
No, I'm saying, I mean, if, if it's on the CIP list as, as it's intended, can we check in the minutes? I mean...
We can certainly check the minutes and we can come back after the recess. We, I mean, we can certainly check the minutes. I don't believe that that item was fully agendized to be decided to be included in the CIP. Because what the agenda wording for that item was to decide the future for the TBD list.
So Mayor, can I make a comment? There is no CIP list other than the one that is effective from 23 to 25.
We have a list of the CIP project right now.
But, but the City Hall is, is not on the list as far as I, am I missing something here?
I'm sorry, it's not on the current CIP. In April, Public Works staff will be bringing a CIP prioritization process to council for the proposed budget.
Correct.
And if, at the time, at that time, if council would like to add City Hall and the seismic retrofit as part of that conversation, we're more than happy to include that.
Okay, so, so there is, there are some City Hall related items on, on the CWP, on the work program.
That's correct.
So are you suggesting we take it off and move it to CIP?
I'm not suggesting either way. What I was referring to was the decision that council made for the TBD list. So council specifically asked that to be, to be considered as part of the CIP. If it's not being considered for the CIP, then it remains on TBD because a lot of similarities are also being shown on the city work program. So I think at the time, council's preference was to keep the City Hall retrofitting project in either CIP world or the city work program world. So I'm not suggesting this to be eliminated from either.
Okay, see, here is the motion that I'm reading from the minute. Second amended motion, agendize the following items as soon as appropriate. Number one, an action item to add the City Hall renovation and the City Hall Annex to the fiscal year 2025-2026 Capital Improvement Program, CIP Projects List. That's it. There is no this or that. So I understand, I think the city manager makes a good point that we have not actually added to the CIP list yet because that list has not come to the council agenda. But I think what I'm saying is since this is, this two are CIP projects, so there is no need to consider them in the work program.
So Mayor, you're suggesting that we, we take these off the list so we can move other lists up the priority by putting these into the CIP? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, because these two are CIP, not the work program.
Will become CIP if we vote on it, is what you're saying?
Yeah.
One last comment. For, since that, many different aspects to the City Hall item. Do you see that all those fit neatly into the C, in CIP as opposed to C, the work program? Because we're not just talking about the annex or, or the building. We really haven't had a discussion on the entire City Hall.
I think, like a lot of the CIP project, after they are added, the staff would come back with design for us to review.
With all the different options, because...
Yeah, with, with design options for us to review.
Okay, because just to, because I'm most familiar with the ones that I listed here in mine, and I don't know which page that's on, on this new thing. Okay, on the second page, I've said, item number 10, no, sorry, 11. I've said City Hall Seismic Safety Issues. So there are just many options that we've never really had a chance to discuss. How do we deal with the seismic safety? Are we going to retrofit? Are we going to remodel? Are we going to lease a temporary facility? Are there pros and cons to any of this? Purchase a new building, include, include plans for some of our city properties. So do they all neatly fit into the CIP is my question?
These were all considered back in 2022. There was thorough consideration by a subcommittee. Maybe Vice Mayor Moore can speak more to that.
Thank you. Separate comment. I do see in the desk items that there are two ranking sheets. Is that all that you received?
That's correct.
Okay. So it's, it's a little difficult for me to only see two, to have some insight to what the other council members were thinking because part of the process of going through this ranking is that you, you have a sense for what you've already heard from the other council members for what items, since their initials are here, for what items that they are interested in. And so there's a game theory aspect to doing this, you know, as you, as you know, for how you're going to weight an item to make sure that it has a chance to, to stay in the mix. So knowing that there's, you know, you have, you take some of the ranking with a grain of salt, but I do, just between Councilmember Mohan and myself, see that we both did put the City Hall on, in the top, gave 10s to both of them, but that's the only insight that I have to that. I have a question, separate question about the emergency operations. I selected emergency operations readiness. What I'd really like to see is something more on emergency preparedness, but you mentioned something about that that makes it sound like that's already part of the normal operations and I don't need to rank it at all. It's going to happen whether I give it a 10 or not.
Yeah.
Is that true?
I'm, I'm happy to take a stab at that. So the, you know, some of this process is, is messy, right? There's a lot of gray area, which is fine. What we're hoping today, so these are your revised proposed projects as-is. We did not want to change any of the language at this point. However, that's kind of the, the step two that we think we might need after tonight, which is let's get your rankings on your existing proposed projects with the language as-is. Let's see how the tally shows up at the end. And I have a little bit of a structure to get us through that, right, after the rankings. And then, then, you know, if you provide direction as council to Pamela and I, we can go back and refine some of the language so the scope is clear, something that we, you know, can define what success would look like. And if you agree, that's when we finalize that at a future meeting. But there needs to be some work related to what you're bringing up, Vice Mayor, is does the way it's, the way it's written right now, is that something that we can actually accomplish? Or is that something, you know, that given where operations land, given where the priorities are, and given the new strategic vision that we have in place, how might the city work program item that has ranked really high might actually work, right? So there's, there's, there may be some work involved once we see, you know, what the rankings look like, but we're happy to help with that clarification.
Okay, so you're talking about perhaps negotiating the language because it could be that two items under the same topic umbrella get different votes separated out, but it's the same topic and then we'll negotiate a, a combination. Okay, that makes sense. With regards to the City Hall motion, that is, that's something that needs to be investigated a little bit to know what the direction was for that and what the impacts are. At the moment, I would say to leave it on the list and reaffirm the, the council interest in it with the understanding that language from the minutes would be inserted into that item automatically because it was already discussed. I don't know if that makes sense.
Vice Mayor Moore, I would say that if, if we end up consolidating, I would love to bump up something else if that gets moved over to CIP as part of that.
Through the mayor, I think that it's an, that's an interesting idea. Over the last few days, I've been looking at special projects, at putting a lot of time into that extensive list that we have. And wondering if there are some of those projects which might be intersecting with, with some of what's going on, on this list already. Yeah, in particular, I did see something with regards to emergency preparedness. It looked like $500,000 was available, which might cover the budget in some way. So, yeah, perhaps something could be moved up. I think we need to be mindful for how many of these, if we have larger projects, how many realistically can we put on this list? Especially seeing that Public Works has a huge number of projects to complete still that are already in the works, so. Okay, just throwing that out there.
Point of inquiry through the mayor. When does the public get to participate too in that decision-making? I see a number of people here waiting.
So right after this, we will go to public comment.
Okay.
If we're ready, we can move to public comment?
So no more comments? Then we are going to public comments. So the consensus to wait, so the City Hall projects stay on the work program in the ranking?
I would, I would, I would recommend you keep this list as-is for now. We will clarify during the break, you know, what the exact motion was, but for now, for the ranking process, and as Vice Mayor alluded to as well, it would be helpful to just see what the rankings come out. There's obviously a discussion portion built in after that, so we can talk about that.
Because we have a limit of top five, right? So like Councilmember Wong, if this is already going to be a CIP, in the CIP list, I don't want to waste that one vote for the City Hall. And so I can vote some, on some other project.
So let's confirm that then before you go ranking.
Before we vote, yeah.
Yeah, so can we do a straw vote on whether we feel the City Hall should be moved to the CIP list and we move, remove that from the work program?
Mayor, I would support that, given that we've put the lives of our city staff at risk in the seismic retrofit for, out for so long. I think it's really important to move on this one more quickly than anything else. But I, on a straw vote, I would vote for it.
So Councilmember Fu.
I tend to agree with Councilmember Mohan on this point. I think that it's valuable to leave it on the CWP at this point in time.
Councilmember Mohan, so you want to keep?
Yes, I would like to keep it on the work program.
So Vice Mayor Moore.
Well, I'm, I'm torn with this one. I served on the, on the Subcommittee and the recommendation at that time was to build the EOC out in the Torrey Annex. And there was an excellent suggestion for a main floor emergency operations center there. It would have an eagle's nest that would overlook it. It looked like a good plan. And it freed up a considerable amount of square footage in the center of the existing City Hall building, which is where the original chambers were, was. And then we also recommended that we would go to a tier four emergency operations standard for the City Hall building. And then it was approved. I think we had like a 4-1 vote on that. So I would prefer that it moved to the CIP as it was, barring that there is some, some different information because we are stalling off. We were ready to go in 2022 and we would be well underway to construction. I think the only question would be where the temporary location would be leased for, for this, for the existing City Hall, and that might bear some, some conversation. So what was the plan for interim, interim lease use? Did we have something in the works?
I think that the staff, once it's added to the CIP list, I'm sure staff will then bring us in, in between their plan. So back in 2022, the City Hall Annex was already added to the CIP list, I think earlier in 2022. And then the City Hall renovation was added to CIP list by council motion in, I think, October, November of 2022. And there was extensive discussion and study on what to do. And then this discussion went back to 2015 or earlier in terms of the cost and whether it's new City Hall renovation. So if we keep this on the work program, that means we will start all over again, have another year of discussion when we've had this over and over and over again. And this has been delayed by two years. The city staff is working in a building that might have earthquake retrofit issue and earthquake retrofit issue, and California had some recent earthquake. So I really would like to see this move forward. I encourage the new council members who were not on the council in 2022 to have a prep session with the Public Works Director to fill you in on what the work and all the study and work that was done prior to 2022, when the council at the time put these two projects on the CIP list. So then I think these two would be moved to the CIP list.
So point of clarification, if I may, through the mayor. So Mayor, you're absolutely right. So there was a direction from council in 2022 to renovate the Torrey Avenue. And fast forward to 2023, October, council's direction was to stop that work. Therefore, this conversation has been back and forth. And looking at the motion that was made in February, it was to add an action calendar for council to give us a definitive and clear direction whether or not council would like to retrofit or build. So there was no decision made based on the TBD list, but the motion was to add this action calendar. So right now, which is why I think it's crucial to leave it either on CIP or CWP. I don't have council majority's vote to do one word the other. Just want to point.
So I think we have a straw vote now to majority straw vote to put the City Hall Annex and the City Hall renovation to the this year's CIP list. We want to consider that as as two of the projects of the CIP list for this year.
I don't know if there's any further discussion, but I would make a motion to do that now, then.
Do we have to vote on that?
Make it official. It's your prerogative as a mayor.
What's your, okay.
Can I make a quick comment?
Mm-hmm.
If we leave it on the work program?
Councilmember Mohan, your microphone is not on.
It's on, off?
No, it's on.
It's off.
It's on maybe closer.
Oh.
Yeah.
My comment was, if we leave it on the work program, that doesn't stop us from including it on the CIP, does it? Is it either or?
It's confusing when it's both. So let's vote. The motion on the table, City Clerk, do you have the motion?
Well, I think this item is agenda is for the city work program, not for the CIP.
Okay, so our straw vote right now is to this, remove the City Hall Annex and City Hall renovation or retrofit from the work program.
That you can do.
That we can do.
Yeah, I think it's within your discretion to remove it from the city work program discussion.
If I may, would it be?
With the understanding that they will be on the CIP list. Yeah.
Mayor, can I just suggest something that might help in this situation? If 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 the majority of council agrees it should not be on the city work program, you maybe don't assign any ranking to it at this point, and then consider it when the city, when the capital improvement project plan comes to you in April.
Okay, thank you for the recommendation.
Pardon, through the mayor. So the the ranking I gave for the City Hall retrofit and the EOC readiness plan was to implement the previously approved 2022 council plan with the EOC migration to the Torrey Annex. I would personally recommend that you put this item on the work program, and and we vote on that. And then we also, when we look at the CIP, then at that point, you already know that you've locked this project in, and then you can then move it on to the CIP at that point. But I wouldn't let this, I wouldn't let this off of the the work program. I would just, just, you don't have to rank it. Just say, we're we're voting on this one now. We're letting it through the gate. We're putting it on the work program.
You mean, so we don't rank it? What do you mean?
You won't need to rank it. It's it's we're, right now, agreeing that we're putting it on the work program.
Okay, so we don't rank that project?
You don't have to. We're that we would take a vote and automatically place it on the work program as I mentioned the project objective.
One more thing I should add here is, you know, we we really appreciate Vice Mayor and Councilmember Mohan for providing your rankings ahead of time. However, I will say they they're not fixed. You're able to change your rankings if you need to during the ranking process.
Okay, thank you. So just to clarify, we are not rank putting ranking on the City Hall Annex or renovation project when we do the ranking. And now we can open to the public comment.
But you would want to vote on it, Mayor?
Yeah, we would include that as part of the motion. Yeah. Okay, now we can open to the public comments, City Clerk.
Yes, Mayor, I have request speak, I have three group, groups requesting to speak for a consolidated time up to 10 minutes each. I, there are six individual requests to speak, which would take us to 48 minutes.
Yes. So I don't, we don't need to shorten the time, right? I think it's good that we have only a single item today. Yeah.
Okay, so so proceed. Great. So we will, we have Eric Zhang, followed by group request, Anoop Singal's group request, followed by Bianca's group request. Anyone wishing to provide comments, please have your request to speak submitted in the next nine minutes. And so we'll start with Eric, if you'd like to step to the microphone. And you have three minutes.
Good evening, City Council, and thank you for this opportunity to speak. My name's Eric Zhang. I'm a high schooler and constituent here in Cupertino. And here today, I'm here on behalf of youth, as well as the general public, to sincerely urge you guys to prioritize sustainability and climate action. Cupertino currently has a goal to reach net zero greenhouse gas emissions by 2040. But looking through the proposed preliminary priorities for the city work plan, I'm gravely concerned at the lack of any concrete plans that are directly targeted towards lowering our greenhouse gas emissions. However, as the city considers its options for goal setting this year, I sincerely hope that the council will prioritize sustainability actions such as urban forest planning, which council members Fuhrin, Mohan, and Vice Mayor Moore have have indicated interest in. Planting native species is crucial for carbon sequestration, as well as a great way to to unite the community around climate action, as well as bonding through service opportunities. Further, I'd like to urge the council to keep their initiatives regarding water conservation policies, as well as the recycled water feasibility study and the electrification study from the previous year's city work plans. These are all crucial actions to set precedence for future climate actions for the city of Cupertino. And if not explicitly in the city work plan, I do hope the the city council will continue to consider the Climate Action Plan 2.0 from a few years back, which has an extensive list set by the city of climate actions and sustainability goals for the next few years. So I hope you'll consider the community's voice and continue to prioritize climate action and sustainability. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next.
But Mayor, your microphone. Mayor, your microphone. Thank you.
I'd like to take the opportunity to clarify a little bit. As we mentioned earlier, 85% of the city work is operational, and we have a very active sustainability department, and they are carrying out the work on implementing climate action plans since it's already approved by the council. So rest, even if that's not part of the 5% of the work program, we are considering city is progressing in that area. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Next, we have a group request from Anoop Singal. Anoop, Doug, Albert, John, and Judy. If you would please join one another at the microphone. Video, please set the timer to 10 minutes. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Anoop Singal, and I represent the Cupertino Pickleball Club, which boasts over 1,000 members. We support the reduction of scope of the Memorial Park Plan. It is the fiscally responsible thing to do. Specifically, we think the construction of a new pickleball court may be removed as a line item. And in its place, the existing eight courts, and all of them are played there all the time, should be made a permanent home for pickleball at CMP. By doing so, the city will save at least 1.2 million plus the site preparation costs. Since I started playing, I have seen five-year-old twins playing with their parents, and I personally partnered with 91-year-old Jim. And thank God I was his partner because we thrashed the other guys. And pickleball is a wholesome, active fun for all ages. This club gives us companionship and solidifies bonds amongst families, friends, and even strangers. All the guys over here, I played with them. I never knew them before I started, and now they are good friends. Some of our members are excellent cooks, and so I'm always looking forward to our Monday breakfast potluck. In public-private partnership between Cupertino Parks and RAC, and our club has done it right to make club home to hundreds in our community. And actually, it makes my wife very, very happy because I'm out of the house four hours a day, every day. She loves it. Furthering the health and well-being of all Cupertino community members stands at the forefront of the council's quality of life principle, which I saw in the board about half an hour ago. And making the current pickleball courts permanent is amongst the easiest things the city council can effect that can meet many of its goals. As they say in the end, sometimes we all want to go where everybody knows our name, cheers.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have Bianca's group. Bianca, Dani, Megan, Kate, and Diana. Welcome. You have up to 10 minutes to provide your comments and address the council.
Thank you so much. Good evening, Mayor and City Councilmembers. My name is Bianca, and I'm here representing the Cupertino Pickleball Club to support your initiative to reduce the city $40 million budget associated with the Cupertino Memorial Park, while also enhancing the quality of life for Cupertino's growing and diverse pickleball community. We respectfully recommend making the current pickleball courts permanent rather than constructing new ones. That will help you with the budget. Pickleball is one of the largest growing sports in the country, with participation increasing by more than 200% over the past three years. But in Cupertino, our local pickleball community has grown from for over 400%. In 2022, we had less than 200 members, and now we have more than 1,000. What was considered a sport for only senior people like me is now a very popular game for players between the ages of 25 and 34. They couldn't be here because they are playing right now. They let the seniors to do the speaking. Just last year, over 1 million players under the age of 18 participated in the sport. This is a promising indicator for the future of pickleball, and our community is fully embracing it, welcoming players for all ages and backgrounds. I had pictures, but I couldn't show you. Our primary means of communication has been through WhatsApp, where we organize everything from advocacy groups or efforts and social events to drills and equipment exchanges. But more than just being a large group, we are an engaged and active community. When we need funds for nets, squitches, and tapes, we raise in no time $6,000. And whenever court maintenance is needed, volunteers are always there to help, rain or shine. Our courts are in use every day from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. The data, we have collected data for the past two months, and you will see in those graphics that I couldn't show, that actually we have more than 40 people every single day playing at the courts. Many of our neighbors play pickleball, but even those who don't are drawn to the friendly, social atmosphere at the courts. I had a picture with Sherry. There is a neighbor that lives across the courts from from the pickleball courts, and she has been a resident for 41 years. After her morning walks, Sherry will often join us at the bleachers. She has shared with us that being part of our pickleball community has greatly enhanced her quality of life. Her story is just one example of the positive impact our community has on residents, both players and non-players alike. In closing, we respectfully ask that you make the current pickleball courts permanent rather than constructing new ones. The decision will not only help reduce the city's budget, but also preserve and enhance the quality of life for Cupertino's growing community. Thank you so much for your attention.
Thank you.
Are we allowed to ask clarifying questions?
I would defer to our city attorney, but I believe you are, Councilmember Wong.
I do have a question for the Cupertino Pickleball Club. What percentage of players are in, actually live in Cupertino? And I say that as I've been playing, I've been playing in since 2013 in Laguna Woods when it first started. So what percentage of your membership is actually Cupertino residents?
It's more than half, I said.
If you could use the microphone, thank you, then our viewers can also hear.
You are asking how many are Cupertino residents? Yeah, we did a survey last time, and more than half of the of the membership is Cupertino residents.
Thank you.
Yes.
And next, we have another group request from Susan Bloomfield, Erica Cristalli, Craig Davis, Christine Chen, Susan Lee. Welcome. You have 10 minutes to address the council.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Susan Bloomfield. My husband and I, he's also here tonight, have been residents of Cupertino for 35 years. And we have never used the facilities like we have since pickleball. We started playing during the pandemic, but had to travel to Mountain View to play with the group. As soon as Cupertino painted pickleball lines on Court 2, we were delighted to play on our very own home courts, even though we had to bring our own net. We were usually the only ones there. The bleachers were empty and unused. That all changed when the city put up nets on Court 2. It is so popular now. The bleachers have never been so well-used. People meet, they eat, they socialize, and they also play. We have so many new friends of all ages and diverse backgrounds. We would never have met any of them if it hadn't been for pickleball. The other addition that was unexpected to pickleball, besides the healthy lifestyle and social benefits, there wasn't civil, excuse me, civic engagement that we did not expect. I and many of our members had never attended council meetings, monthly chats with the mayor, or the state of the city address. Now we do. All because of pickleball, we have become more civically involved and engaged citizens, something a city should want and be very proud of. We are a thriving community, and we hope that instead of building new courts, you will allow us to have a permanent home on the courts by the bleachers. And the city will save a great deal of money, a win-win situation. Please make this a priority in your planning. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Frank Chu, followed by David Lim, followed by Jennifer Griffin. Welcome, Frank. Video, would you please adjust the timer to three minutes? You have three minutes to address the council.
Good evening. I don't have a calorie behind me, but I'll try to speak fast. My name is Frank Chu. I'm here tonight to advocate for a simple yet significant improvement.
Maybe you need to speak a little more into.
Okay. So I'm here tonight to advocate for a simple yet significant improvement. Paint permanent pickleball lines at Memorial Park. Currently, only four of the A pickleball courts have permanent lines. The rest rely on removable tapes that requires constant retaping by our dedicated volunteers. The rest rely on removable tapes that requires constant retaping by our dedicated volunteers. This task isn't just time-consuming, it is actually a relentless battle against the elements. The process involves peeling off old residues akin to remove stubborn, sun-baked tape that refuse to let go. Despite using hot steam, heat guns, and solvents, the residues persist and worsens over time. Over a year now, our volunteers have retaped lines every two to three weeks. It takes 12% hours monthly to keep those lines taped. Imagine the long hours they spend kneeling under the sweltering sun for freezing mornings, all to ensure that our community can enjoy this beloved sport. As far as I know, Memorial Park is the only public court in the Bay Area that still uses tape for lines. This is an unnecessary and impractical burden on our community. The Cupertino Pickleball Club has raised private funds and offered to cover the expense of painting the lines. It is time to make this much-needed and common-sense improvement and paint permanent pickleball lines on Court 1. Thank you for your time and consideration. We don't have a picture to show. Picture, may I just show you the picture and send it to the staff and pass it around? Thank you. These are pictures of all volunteers kneeling and spending a lot of time painting and redoing the line. So you can see for yourself the amount of work and effort and the people involved required to do the line. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Next, we have Jennifer Griffin. And then we will move to those members of the public requesting to speak virtually. Welcome, Jennifer.
Can you all hear me? This looks like it's too high. I don't know. Yeah, I'm just gonna make it, I'm a little bit concerned about the public setup over here. It's a little difficult to see and kind of move around, so just passing that along. I would like to have a dais here to put my papers on, but we're not going to go there. I'm glad you all are having this meeting today. Sorry if I was late, but I could not find any parking anywhere. I'm going to start out right now that when you all, you had a list of 10 items. I think it started with, number one was enhance senior services. Number 10 was transparency for commission meetings. I'm going to talk about number four, which is adopting level of service again. I am very, very concerned about the vehicles miles traveled. I don't think it does any good. The public doesn't understand it. We need LOS, Level of Service. What that does, that whenever you have a traffic, like you have multiple projects, you have a traffic survey, and what happens is that the intersections that are affected are assigned a level of A, B, C, D, E, F. That means from very good to very poor. That's what we've had for the last 25 years. Someone, somewhere decided to dump it, and it hasn't got its... Level of service tells the public whether they can get out of their neighborhood or not. We have got, if you weren't aware, we have three massive, I'm going to call them condo condo complexes that are going to be obliterating massive amounts of retail staples, Panera, and down at East Estates across from Old Valco. We are going to have massive traffic jams. We need to study those intersections. I found out today that at Saratoga Avenue in Stevens Creek, a builder is putting in 500 housing units. That intersection, I went to the Saratoga meeting in San Jose on Saratoga Urban Village. Everyone said the main problem on Stevens Creek in Saratoga is traffic, traffic, traffic. I also, because of Pacific Palisades and Altadena, I want a permanent location for a command center if we have earthquakes, fires, et cetera. I was at Deans at campus when the 1989 earthquake hit. They set up command centers in the police department in San Jose. Hewlett Packard on Stevens Creek set them up. We need to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. I just want to make sure I didn't skip Frank Chu.
He spoke.
David, okay. David, I apologize, I skipped you. David Lim, welcome.
Thank you. Apparently, I didn't get the memo about the shirt or the suit I'm wearing. Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers, and fellow residents. My name is David Lim, and I'm a Cupertino resident. I'm a member of the Cupertino Pickleball Club at the Memorial Park. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I'd like to propose a simple, proactive solution to preserve the pickleball courts as a valuable asset while minimizing the noise disruption for the nearby residents, a sound barrier along the Christiansen Drive side of the courts. So far, there's only one real noise complaint that has been raised, and we see this as an opportunity to act before the issue escalates. Sound levels from the pickleball courts range from 59 to 63 decibels during peak hours. It's well within the city ordinance, which is 65 decibels. However, even small reductions in noise can have a significant impact. And a sound barrier can reduce levels by 10 to 15 decibels, bringing the noise closer to the ambient background levels. In addition to enhancing the quality of life for nearby residents, addressing noise concerns helps protecting property values. Studies show that noise pollution can decrease home values. By taking action now, we can prevent potential declines in property values that might result from the increased noise complaints. We ask the city to consider funding and installing the sound barrier. Thank you for your time and dedication to our community. Next time, I'll wear a better suit.
Thank you, David. And now we will move to those members of the public requesting to speak virtually. We have Dashil Leeds, San R., and Tracy K. Welcome, Dashil.
Hello, my name is Dashil Leeds. I'm the Conservation Coordinator for the Sierra Club Limer Prieta Chapter. We're glad to see that you've separated out the bullet point for environmental sustainability from the fiscal item. However, since each of those items have subtext, I think it is important to consider adding bullet points to the environmental sustainability goal. Number one would be protecting and restoring biodiversity. And number two would be implementing the Climate Action Plan 2.0 to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. So I know you voted on this already, but if that could be folded into your next motion, that would be awesome to consider. Regarding the council priorities themselves, I just want to start by adding a plus-one to Eric's comments about the urban forest, water conservation, electrification, and climate process. For the priorities, we hope you rank as highly as possible increasing the urban forest tree canopy and greenery across the city, prioritizing native plants, and engaging the community through volunteer tree planting efforts. Cupertino should expand its urban forest for the benefit of its community members and wildlife. Urban forests reduce the heat island effect, make it more enjoyable to walk and bike, and provide climate and ecological resilience. I do want to ask a question here. I do hope that this gets asked during the following council discussion, which is, where can we know more about Cupertino's plans this year moving forward to implement the Climate Action Plan measures? I'm curious if this will be discussed as part of the following budget proceedings. It would be great to know about what Climate Action Plan measures the city will be considering for implementation this year, as there are a lot of Phase 2 measures that still have yet to be completed. So thank you so much for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Dashil. Next, we have San R., followed by Tracy K. Welcome, San.
Good evening, Mayor Chau, and councilmembers. I wish to remind council that the Memorial Park item on the agenda was a CWP item around Memorial Park study to reduce the funding. And so I would offer up that you have so far heard overwhelming support to defund the pickleball courts at Memorial Park. Very glad to hear that. And so I would offer up to council to move forward and defund the Memorial Park pickleball courts while you have such overwhelming support. In addition, given that there was a clarifying question by Councilmember Wong about the percentage of resident and non-resident, I would urge RAC to start a registration program to register and issue membership cards for pickleball usage so that we may actually do an address verification to understand how many are residents and non-residents. Furthermore, I want to offer up that there are excellent pickleball facilities in all the country clubs around us, such as the Fairbreak Club, the Brookside Club, the Bay Club Santa Clara, Bay Club Las Gatos in Coatside, and several other clubs. And so I propose that, given the extraordinary demand for pickleball, that the city charge non-residents the same fees as these country clubs charge, which can run anywhere from $10,000 to $20,000 a year. So let us, in the interest of managing the supply-demand equation here, apply a membership card, check for memberships, and charge $10,000 to $20,000 a year on any non-resident wishing to play pickleball in Cupertino. I am sure, given the challenges of supply and demand, the situation will work itself out, and the city may actually gain revenue. We have a revenue problem. Our non-residents wish to help us out. Let's take their help. And if the facilities of Cupertino are superior to the facilities of the country clubs, I'm sure that revenue will be something that will come into the city. So I urge the city to actually defund Memorial Park. You do not need to make any changes. Memorial Park is lovely as it is. We don't need the pickleball courts, as we just heard. The dock park exists on Mary Avenue, so you don't need to make any further changes. And so let's just leave Memorial Park assets and save the city 80 million. Let's further start monetization of pickleball, non-residents only, so that our residents can enjoy while non-residents pay. I want to come back to the items on the CWP list. I urge you to defund the ATP. The ATP is all covered by the 2016 bike plan. Let's continue to use what exists of the 2016 bike plan. I also urge you to support the Nexus fee study, which is critical, so we don't waive fees, and to support the SFH permit streamlining, so residents do not face hurdles with permits. I urge you to support public noticing and outreach policy so that there is clear noticing and residents are not caught by surprise. Please support the urban forest, and please make Blackberry Farm facilities useful throughout the year, including the pool and the events facilities.
Thank you, San. That is your time. And our final member of the public requesting to speak before the nine-minute cutoff is Tracy K. Welcome, Tracy.
Hi, thank you, City Council and staff, for this meeting tonight. I did have some feedback around council work priorities. First of all, thank you for prioritizing the City Hall seismic retrofit. Hopefully, that also includes EOC. We've heard from community members that are very concerned about fire hazards now that the risk levels have been reevaluated for certain areas of Cupertino. So, you know, we do have a need for an EOC, and hopefully, a disaster management plan gets rolled into whatever work happens with that EOC. I also wanted to speak in support of the Memorial Park renovation. We know the plan should have never been anywhere near 80 million, so if you can please prioritize just pairing that plan back to a fraction of what it originally cost, or what that plan originally cost, and just make basic and needed upgrades to make it a better reflection of what our city is. That would be great. There were a lot of unnecessary costs in the original plan, of rooting, replanting of trees, that you could really eliminate. And this would really help support our surrounding ecosystem of businesses and like the whole idea of a thriving downtown. Next, I did want to support the Small Business Retail Economic Development Strategy items. This appears on most councilmember top-10 lists, and you know, what form it takes, I think, is probably the biggest question. I would suggest other cities like Palo Alto have done a retail zoning strategy study to understand what is the best way to approach encouraging more retail to be built and also to help it succeed. So that could be part of it. I also support the impact fee and evaluation and Nexus study to make sure we don't lose millions in dollars of fee waivers. Please also streamline the single-family home permitting process. You know, if the city is looking to increase revenue, this is kind of a win-win, because your residents get their homes remodeled more quickly, and then their property values also get reassessed more quickly as well. So more on property tax. I also support the financial cost management policy review, because again, this can help the city close its structural deficit more quickly than just solely relying on external factors that are out of our control, like development or sales tax revenue increases. And then, things that I also support, but they don't seem like work program items. I think that restoring hybrid commissions and increasing transparency is great, but that feels kind of operational and not necessarily like it needs to be on CWP. And then, you know, same with the tree planting. Does it need to be a city work program item, or can it just fall into ongoing operating costs? Thank you very much, and I trust that this council will arrive at a plan that really helps bring the city forward.
Thank you, Tracy. Mayor, no additional requests to speak for this item within the set timeline cutoff.
Thank you. There was a question about where can we find out more about Cupertino's plan to carry out Climate Action Plan 2.0.
We can have staff follow up with the Sierra Club separately.
So we are implementing that, even though they don't appear in the work program, right?
That's part of the 85%.
Yeah, good. That's good to confirm that. And then there was another question of whether the hybrid commission meeting should be a work program item, or is it an operational item that doesn't really need to get on the work program?
I'm sorry, Mayor, was that a question, or is that a statement?
It's a question whether that needs to be on the work program, or that is required is maybe direction from council.
I think that's your discretion.
Okay, thank you. And then tree planting, that's another question. The public was asking whether they would be, should be, is another operational item also?
I'm not sure if I understand the genesis and the intent for the tree planting question. We can certainly follow up with Planning Commission Vice Chair separately on that note.
Okay. And I think the pickleball likely it will be CIP on the CIP list. I think you mentioned the CIP list will come to the council in April?
The CIP prioritization process will come to council in April.
Okay, so that, so if we, the council might be considering any improvement for pickleball court, either permanent striping or buffer, that's likely a CIP item, right?
That's part of your prioritization discussion.
Okay, thank you. And I'd like to thank the member of the public. It's like, it's great to see a lot of new faces, and thank you for your civic engagement. But I hope your engagement goes beyond pickleball. We need a lot of your input on many other items. So continue to attend council meetings, and you can help us all make Cupertino better. Thank you. So now we will, the council can take a break to rank, unless any other council member has comments or questions. Councilmember for one.
Thank you, Mayor. Just one clarifying question to staff with regard to the Memorial Park plan. There seems to be a lot of confusion about exactly what this cost is. It is not a funded project, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to make sure that that was absolutely clear to everyone.
Also, do we keep the hybrid commission as one of the ranking items, or do we remove those?
I have a question for staff. Why should there be a study on hybrid meetings? We already know how much they cost, right? We've done them before. We've done it in planning. We've done it in other ones. It's just a question of if we add them, like what is the staff time and cost, right? Is there additional studies, like the work that's required to study that?
I don't believe that was the question. The question was whether or not to bring back hybrid or not to bring back hybrid, and that's certainly council's discretion.
That's our discretion, right? It doesn't need to be on CWP.
Yes, staff is not recommending a study. It's one of the list.
Oh, we added it. Oh, that's even worse.
Do we want to say we don't rank it? Because is there a consensus we don't rank it, but then we think that's important?
Make it so.
How about other council members?
I wasn't planning on putting any rating on it.
Uh-huh. But then you do support.
I feel like it's a project that's going to be very far in the future, and so it wasn't something that I felt that was putting any points on at this time would make sense to do.
Mm-hmm, okay. Yeah, and council member Mohan, you have any?
Sure. I think we had done a fairly detailed study on a hybrid, use of hybrid, the process for, for commission meetings. And I, is there an informational?
There was an info memo. We can certainly recirculate it. This probably was almost eighteen months ago, but we can certainly circulate. So the decision is definitely in operation, which is the reason why we decided to not go forward with it. However, if council believes that this is something that falls under the goal, we can certainly make it happen. We will be coming back with additional funding and staffing resource asked, though.
Right. If I recall, we came up with a solution that seemed to satisfy many people, including the public as well as commissions.
I believe so.
If you.
I don't believe so.
Okay.
Because right now, only the Planning Commission has hybrid meeting. All the other commissions only have recorded meeting. Public is not able to attend virtually or make comments virtually. So for seniors and families with young kids, that's not very equitable in terms of access.
Mayor, can I?
That's why I added the item, yeah.
Can I just add a quick comment here? So, you know, for, for the, for the sake of the ranking process tonight, right? What, even though, yes, these, these discussions are helpful, what not, what might not be helpful is removing items, because these are proposed by at least one council member at this point, right? So then you could individually rank how you would rank your top projects for today. So instead of removing, maybe you, you don't rank that project if it's not important. But I would, I would recommend we don't alter the list or remove projects at this time.
I think we are not ranking when they are not appropriate work program items, yeah.
I, I think you're just communicating out loud, and we can think out loud. This is part of the deliberative process. So, but you're saying, leave them on if we all decide not to vote on, we can all decide not to vote on, that's your process?
That's correct.
Okay, just want to clarify.
Okay, and I think, I think the ranking process is where the council should be hearing from each other. So I would like to give each council member one minute to pitch something you would like the other people to put top ranking on. So council member one?
Now? Can we, can we go to the break and then pitch?
But we are going to rank, so.
The way you're going to rank?
So, okay, I'll go first, you can work on your list, I guess, yeah. Because, so for me, it's to enhance senior services, because we have done the surveys, but then we have not really take, utilize the survey to decide how do we fill in the gaps in senior services, especially a lot of seniors are aging at home, and they could not afford expensive senior housing. So that's something I hope to, yeah. And then the fiscal policy review, because the city, from the last quarterly treasurers report, we still put twenty million dollars in cash, when all the other cities I have surveyed have put in about two to five million dollars in cash or cash equivalent. That's an immediate saving we could have if we have a better cash flow policy and investment policy. And then, of course, the impact fee study. Yeah, okay. Any other people who would like to pitch something?
Are we doing like a top three, or?
And one minute, whatever you want to mention.
Through the mayor, I, in the supplemental materials, you can see my overall list, and the, the order might change when I go vote, but you, it's there for, for your enjoyment.
Okay. You have your top five, yeah.
Look, I'm, I'm happy to support council member Mohan's business revitalization. I see that's her top list. I'm happy to support Vice Mayor Moore's impact fees. I think that's very important. I think it's also important, if we're taking EOC and City Hall off, not off, but we're not voting on it, as we hoping that shows up somewhere else in CIP, shows it into the CIP process. I'm, I'm actually big on the permit piece, trying to make it easier for residents on the permits. And I think the thing that's not on here that I, I would be pushing for pretty hard, either here or at a later point in time, is we need to get our lanes back on Deansa, and we need to make it easier for our automobiles. I, I bike, but I also drive, and I spend ninety percent of my time driving, showing people back and forth when I'm here. And, and I think it's really important for people to be able to move with efficiency, safely, taking into account of pedestrians, taking into account of bikers. But we've got to be able to get from point A to point B, and a thirty-minute delay at six P.M. on Deansa going southbound is not acceptable. And so I would push that one very hard.
Thank you. Anyone else? Council member for one?
Sure.
You have something to add later?
Okay.
So I'll, I'll give another pitch again for revising the heart of the city. I'll note that the mayor, in her State of the City address and in her comments to the Chamber LAC, spoke at some length about, you know, the fact that a, a great deal of the space in the heart of the city will be consumed by, or is attracted to be consumed by townhouse developments. And I'm not sure that that's really the building form that we want to prize in an area of the city that would benefit from a different housing typology. And so I think that if we can revise the, the heart of the city plan, and possibly also the North Deansa conceptual plan, that, that would go a long way toward preventing that particular outcome, and allow us to have a, a better assortment of housing in the city that will also help support the rest of the retail environment that we have.
Can I ask for a clarification through the mayor, through council member Frun?
Okay.
Council member Frun, so what housing mix do you think would be helpful, and what retail mix are you looking at? So, because I might tend to support you, but I support the concept of heart of the city, but I think we might have different definitions, so I want to make sure I'm supporting the same thing.
So, you know, right now, the issue that we have with regard to the, the housing densities that are available in the heart of the city is that they're, they're ranked at twenty-five DUA, which is ideal for townhouse development. If it's slightly higher than that, you can't build the townhouses any longer, you have to build in a different housing typology. Slightly denser development in that area would allow for greater support for the retail developments that we would have in that area. So that's generally speaking where I'm coming from.
Got it, thank you.
Council member Mohan, you have one more.
No, I, I also turned in my top few. So I, I'll just make a pitch for my top ones. The business revitalization, economic development, which other people have stated, the, streamlining the permitting process, keeping blackberry farms, pool and picnic areas open throughout the year, updating the city's impact fees, and developing the tree, the urban forest program.
Vice Mayor? Oh, you have, your ranking list is there, yeah. Okay, so let's go and take how many?
So thirty minutes total.
Thirty minutes total, and we have how many minutes for ranking?
Yeah, so the, you're doing number three first, which is fifteen minutes. So you have, if we break right now, seven o'clock, seven fifteen, we'll collect the, the ranked list from you, and then next fifteen minutes, we'll go back, analyze, and bring it back to you.
So we're reconvening at seven thirty?
Yes.
So we horse trade during the break?
I mean, the public, no, we will recon, the public meeting will reconvene.
At seven thirty.
At seven thirty.
Here.
Yeah, we were turning the ranking sheet at seven fifteen to the staff.
And Mayor, we would recommend you probably do your ranking somewhere around here without talking to all of you.
Yeah.
And then we also re-ask you to refrain talking about it during your dinner break in City Hall.
Yeah.
And we'll, we'll, we'll come here at seven fifteen to get the lists from you.
Yeah. Thank you, staff, for this process, and it's, really appreciate it, it's very structured.
Thank you.
Combine all the rankings? So when will the public be able to see this list?
We, we will, we will add it as a, as written communication after the meeting.
Okay. And so what do we do now?
So I can, I can carry us through here. So the, we're now reaching the, sort of the last section, right? Which is narrowing your top project list at this point. So this is, again, going to be a discussion point. So during the break, council had an opportunity to rank the, the projects on the consolidated list, and then staff took those rankings. We created another consolidated list. Remember, total items on this list right now are forty-nine. And in order for us to, you know, come up with a list that could work potentially in terms of staff, restricted staff resources, and budgetary resources, now this is part is where we have a discussion. To organize the discussion, as you'll notice in your handouts, we have, you know, we triage the list into three portions. We kind of did a quick mathematical and qualitative analysis. So you'll see, you know, that the items that received most points are listed at the top, and they're in green. Items that received the least amount of points are at the very end of the list, and they are highlighted in red. And then the, kind of the middle portion of the list, which is, you know, sort of important and sort of maybe not, are all in white. So what we think, right, typically, in, in change efforts, the biggest limiting factor is, of course, leadership capability and bandwidth, so in addition to financial resources. So what we would like council, you know, to, to focus on is, all of the green items, which I believe are about eleven here, it seems to be that there's consensus that these are projects that are important in some capacity to all of you. They've received a total of fifteen points or more. Those can, you know, continue to move forward as a priority. It's also clear that the, the items in red, which received anything below seven points, should just be dropped at this point for discussion and for carrying on to the next work program. And there are about, let's say, eleven to thirty-five, about twenty-four or so projects that are in the middle tier. If council can take some time to discuss those and maybe come up with an additional five to seven items from this portion, that could potentially start looking like a, you know, the, the list that we can kind of start talking about, yes.
Tina, there might be some items that are not, that are zero in red, that could be combined with something that's up, because they're kind of similar nature. This is back to what you were saying earlier?
Yeah, and I, I would, you know, so that's part of the discussion. And what I would suggest, rather than combining in real time now, so we don't end up with projects that just are too large to handle, is, you know, I would look for council, if you can give direction tonight to staff, to, you know, take back what comes out of your, you know, the greens moving forward, yes, and there may be some overlap there, you know, dwindle down the white portion to about five to seven items. And then if you give direction to staff to refine the scope and the language to clarify some of the overlaps, even though they may not be showing up on green or white, we can go back and bring that proposed language to about like, you know, the, the twenty or so list that you can then consider for adoption.
I think, thank you for the consolidated list. Some of those, like the small business revitalization, I remember there were like three or four that's very similar, so I picked one of them. And so now they probably appear as three or four different items.
Correct. Yeah, that, that's what we're, and, and we're noticing that as well, right? So there's, there's clearly, that is clearly a priority for council across the board, and you'll see that it's already in green, so we won't need to worry about business revitalization if it was in white or red at this point.
No, what I mean is, is the top one and two are business revitalization, but there were other small business revitalization, like number twelve. It's, I remember it's similar to number one and two, right?
One, two, nine, and twelve are very similar, that you could probably bundle, is all I'm saying.
Again, I would caution us to bundle at this time, but if, you know, if council's giving us direction for, to, to refine the scope, that includes some of these components in your top priorities, we can do that from our technical expertise standpoint.
Because it was, also wouldn't make sense to have four similar items on in the work program.
Right, correct.
So it could be, maybe you'll bundle them, but maybe separate into two items rather than four?
Yeah, I, again, I would, I would refrain from doing it in, in live, real time.
Of course, yeah.
But there's, there's like variations enough.
I'm saying, yeah, of course, not in real time. So I'm saying that if four similar items, maybe one big item is too big, maybe it could be two separate items, and then we can rank again next time.
Yeah, yeah, if you, we wouldn't rank again next time, but we would, you know, again, there's two here that I'm looking at, the top two, if you look at them, they're different enough, although they, they're called small business revitalization or economic development in this case, they are different, right? So we can, if both of those are showing up as top priorities, we're, we're going to, again, with your direction, go back and refine the scope a little bit to, to a point where it makes sense to, to us in terms of accomplishing it, and to you as your priority.
Yeah, and then like, impact fee also appear multiple times.
Yep.
But through the mayor, if I may, even if they are repeated theme, I think that's council's dedication for an area, the goal that you all embrace. So I think it's okay to have multiple similar projects that are embracing the same goal. It doesn't necessarily all have to be different. I mean, of the six goals that you adopted tonight, clearly, small business revitalization, economic development is heavy on everyone's mind. So perhaps there are different directions. If you get a chance to read the council member's proposed project description, they're slightly different. So I wouldn't necessarily consolidate or merge them, because they all have different angles, but I think it's loud and clear that we all want something to do in the economic development area, and that is, it is one goal all five of you are embracing at this time.
So, I, I, in general, I agree with you, and I can see why you want to leave it separately. I would say one and twelve and two and nine are similar enough to consolidate, and that frees up two other projects that we can put into the CWP. But if you disagree, if you guys all disagree, that's fine, too. But if you want to consolidate that to be able to move up something that's on your list as other council members, then that's your opportunity to do the consolidation. If you think they're different, then, you know, ignore it, it's fine. If you think they're too big, and it's too much for staff, that's also a good consideration. I'm not advocating one way or another, I just think those two seem very similar, and that might give you a chance to add something else that someone might be advocating for here on the council.
So to me, I think twelve, which suggests events for Restaurant Week, Bopatino, to me, that's like implementation for number two, actually.
Oh, number two, okay.
To explore options to support small business.
Yeah, one's policy, the other one's actually more of like the, the effect of that policy.
Yeah, so it's like the festivals are implementation method for number two. So this naturally combined, because it's, one is an suggested method to reach the goal in number two. And one and two are different in the sense that two is retail, and one is companies, startups. I think there is another one by council member Frun about mid-sized business. I was really tempted to rank that, but then I had to pick one.
Nine, nine, nine.
Yeah. So there is the business side. The retail side is one thing. There is a business revitalization. It's not retail, but the mid-sized business, diversification of those business. Actually, I was just talking to Lily May, the Fremont, she spoke highly of Tina, who was still from Fremont. She says that when she was the mayor, she go after CEOs proactively to get them to relocate to Fremont. So I, so I had extended discussion with her about how, what the council can even get engaged in, engaging in bringing businesses to, when they seek leadership in the companies who are looking into expanding or relocating, and then, so they have, so she says she could proactively have communication with commercial rail brokers, so that they know what vacancies are there. And that I see is now. And that I see is number one. So it's a different type of economic development.
So I think we're all in agreement that there may be a lot of overlap, but there's certain nuances of, if, again, if council can give us direction, we're happy to refine.
Like one, I think one and nine, um, from council member forum seem to be similar. It's support of business, existing business.
Uh, I think one is more about making sure the city is grabbing as much money as it can from federal state sources, uh, which is the grant writer position and looking for opportunities. Uh, when you look at nine, nine is actually a, a good plan to attract small businesses to come into place. And twelve is really trying to make it easier for existing businesses that are there. I believe that's, that's kind of how it reads to me, so.
Okay. Existing versus new.
If, if I can, mayor.
Yeah.
So nine actually specifically also notes preservation of existing small businesses. So it is there.
So then nine is, nine and twelve are similar? I mean, twelve is, could be seen as a potential way to achieve nine?
Not necessarily, if I may. Um, nine is more preserving, that's retention. Twelve is attraction. So in the world of economic development, there are two ways to get them. One is to maintain your existing base. And two is what, like you said, like you mentioned, mayor, earlier, to attract. So I think we haven't really had the conversation with council, what is our economic development strategy? If I could be so bold, I think it would be too much for us to buy two directions at one time, to retain and to attract. With all due respect, I only have one economic development manager to do everything for the city.
So I think twelve is retaining because it says creating same events and festivals. So this means these are helping the existing business to attract business, to get more visibility, right? So these are not.
So mayor, if I, if I may remind council again, I think it would be helpful for staff today if you can give us a little bit of parameters and direction on the items that are in the middle portion. And we are happy to, again, take the, you know, your priorities that are already set in green. We know we want to work on them, you want to work on them, um, and bring it back.
Yeah.
Through the mayor.
Vice Mayor Moore.
Thank you. Um, so item ten, I would like to know more about this because the one hundred day restriction is, was from a legal settlement. And it seems to me that suggesting that this be changed is potentially inviting litigation. And at that point, I, you know, I've never seen a, a priority setting be like this, where we would be suggesting that. So personally, for this item, I would want to see some information provided to the city council before we suggest we go into this. And I would like to know what, what potential litigation we could be having here. It was a, it was a sequoet mitigation for, uh, from a lawsuit to limit the access to a hundred days. This item is suggesting that, um, you would get so much fee revenue from the picnic area. And I don't know, perhaps it, someone from Parks and Recreation could let us know if this is even a viable suggestion.
I can take a stab in answering those, if, if I may. Um, so before Chris Jensen left us, we had a healthy discussion on this item. So Vice Mayor, you're absolutely right. So this is a settlement agreement as part of the potential litigation that never really took root. However, we did assign a large scale and also three dollar sign. Because in order for the hundred day restriction to be lifted, we will have to perform an EIR. And as you know, EIR would take some dollars and also some time to do that. And you're absolutely right, there might be potential additional litigation to challenge this exercise. So this, this item, the city work program asks us for two things. The potential and the feasibility to open it up beyond a hundred days. So we're looking at potentially an environmental impact report. And to look at any feasibility to outweigh the revenue that will be generated beyond a hundred days. So there are actually two prompts.
So my understanding is a BlackBerry Farm pool right now is a heavily subsidized area for corporate, for the city, right?
I believe so.
So the dollar amount here is only the environmental impact. It does not include the potential operating cost additional?
No, it does not.
Okay, so in case we do that, the current, how much is it operate the, for a hundred days now?
I, I don't have that information right now.
So if we say open it for two hundred days, the subsidy from the city would likely double?
We can come back with those numbers, but right now, the hundred days, um, does really restrict the operation of BlackBerry Farm. So it's the pool and also the picnic area. Um, and a hundred days is a little bit less than a third of the year.
Through the mayor, I would want to hear more about this, whether the pool's heated, how, what its revenue stream is like, what the picnic area revenue stream is like. What's the cost of an EIR? What's the project for this EIR? Is the project hours of use? I, I don't quite understand that, so. Uh, and then also the, I think the, the question, if we're looking at a potential litigation, that, that we're look, that could be a closed session matter?
Could we maybe get an info memo about this first? Maybe that would be helpful, no?
I'm sorry.
No?
Oh, yes, through the mayor.
Maybe an info memo about this will be helpful.
For, but this is already on the city work program, so I don't know if we can do an info memo.
No, info memo on the history of the.
The current, the current limitation?
Yeah, the current limitation and if there is settlement, oh, then include the links to the settlement offer and the current operation cost.
That will be the city attorney's office.
So maybe an info memo on this.
Pardon? Um, through the mayor, I would also want to hear about the revenue. And, yeah, this, this one's, this is a very unusual.
The revenue and the expenses, um, the current in, in the past few years.
Yes, thank you.
I could make a quick comment. Oh, okay. So I was the one who proposed this item. Uh, and, and the whole, and the purpose of this was, you know, I think because it's a, a part of a settlement, uh, we do have to go through the sequoet review and I, I'm assuming that's the way to go. So I didn't have any more details on how to proceed, other than to just list it here. And I thought the, um, ask from staff would be to see what it would take to open the pool and the picnic areas year round, rather than restricting it to a hundred days. I know it's part of a settlement and I, I wanted to revisit that whole item only because it's been more than ten years since the settlement happened.
Through the mayor, through the mayor, I'm sorry, through the mayor, that, that, to Tina, that's, that would be in your discuss helpless understand bucket?
Right now, it's rated very highly.
Oh, so that's still most important?
It's most important as you've indicated collectively. Oh, I thought we're.
Yes, likely, it could be, it could be ten plus seven, so. But I think an info memo makes sense because this is a high, there is a lot of interest in this and it's helpful.
It's number ten. We have a lot of, we have a lot of letters about it, but it's good to understand the business model.
So mayor, if, um, if this is a green item, which it is, it's a highly, uh, highly rated item. And if it's accepted as part of the city work program moving forward, then the info memo and other steps, I think, would be, you know, on Pamela to bring forward to you.
I would prefer to have an info memo before.
Right, but I think the direction could come part of that this is a priority item for us, it's on the list. And then bring forward, you know, what needs to be done in order for us to remove this restriction. Info memo could be part of that.
So that could be step one. I think that's Tina saying.
No, that's not what I'm, I think the direction from the council is we would like an info memo before the next discussion on work program prioritization.
Before we bring it, the list back to you on the, is that what the, and is, is that something that council?
Whether this item gets on the work program or not, we would like an info memo on this because, the history and the high interest on this item.
Is that in addition to leaving this item on your top list?
I think we will have another discussion on the work program, so that's separate.
Got it, okay. And so if you could please be, you know, specific in that direction as council, that would be helpful to staff. Because right now, we're only discussing this list, right? So if we're adding, um, an info memo, then i- if we can get some direction in terms of the ask from entire council, that would be helpful.
Can I make a quick comment, mayor? In, in any case, all the items that we are selecting as part of the, uh, work program will have, they will have to come back with more information on, on pretty much all of them. So why would this be any different from, uh, the other items, for example?
I think we often request info memo on items of interest.
True, but, but we would need more information on all these items, right? Because these are all just one-line descriptions for the most part.
Through the mayor, um, it's because we have a potential of having a lawsuit because this is a legal settlement. It went through legal action. And we're trying to undo that apparently, or some council members are trying to undo that, which could lead to further litigation over this matter. None of these other items have, have potential litigation associated with it where it's trying to, trying to undo a settlement. This is very unique. I've never seen this for a work program item where we're even, even talking about needing to potentially have a closed session to see about doing this, so. Yeah, I, I would personally want to have more information before it, this, this one has controversy on it. That's a problem.
So the public will get this as a written communication? And would we get a breakdown of the ranking?
It will be exactly as.
Each individual council members?
Um, no, it will be the consolidated ranked list.
So can we also get individual rankings for these items?
For what purpose, though?
Yeah. Would you also like that information?
I would, mayor. Thank you.
Okay. So maybe it would be great if we can have, um, here is the, just where, where the ranking, yeah, the individual rankings.
Should we connect them? I'll, I'll collect your lists after then.
Or it could be, if that's too hard, it could be just like the, the ranking sheet. Council member Wuhan and council member more already has. So we have a list of rankings for each.
If you can, I'll, I'll collect your list.
From ten to seven to four to one. Maybe that would be sufficient.
Sure. It, it won't be tonight, but we'll submit it as a written communication.
So I think to bring the conversation back, mayor, if I may, um, so we're looking for some clarity. We thought we have some clarity with the greens because they're highly prioritized. It sounds like that you would, you're not quite ready to even move forward with the greens yet. Can I make a bold suggestion that are you ready to move with the red ones? That they, um, can be dropped from the conversation so that we can help you to focus on the greens and the black?
Thank you. I think someone, I think council member Wong was saying some of the red ones likely could be combined with other items. So any council member would like to revive one of the red ones to combine with another item?
Well, forty-five is similar to everything we talked about in one, two, nine, and twelve, but that's, that's really why I was kind of bringing that up. That was your original economic development, praying, mayor.
So forty-five.
I, I guess my suggestion is, is maybe as a council, we can just give direction that there's like three areas in economic development. One area is really retaining existing businesses, uh, through efforts and programs like the Economic Development Committee, having a small business type of events that are there, reducing the permitting process. Uh, number two is really attracting new businesses, uh, bringing new development into the city, trying to create conditions that people, that would help existing businesses that are there. Uh, and, and I, number three is really to have the governance structure for that, which is Economic Development Committee. I think those are the three, if we were to break it down that way. So. Just, just a suggestion. I mean, if I get, if I get other council member's support to break into those three buckets, then we can just combine them into three, and then you have three priorities right there. And that should free up everything.
Yeah, those are three separate items.
Yes, three separate items, correct. Not, not as one big mega project. That would be a whole department.
I could see the avalanche coming.
Yeah, that's a whole department. No, I, I agree with you on the scale. I'm just saying, but there's three segments there that we can all agree to that would satisfy, I think, the majority of our needs. That seems to be our number one priority here, if I can, uh, potentially speak for everybody here in that sense, if people can agree with it.
I would just say, if you, if you can please provide direction to, to have a little bit of flexibility. So if we need to refine the scope and bring forward based on what, you know.
Think of it as attract, retain, and the governance model.
Yeah, that makes sense.
So anyone else?
Mayor?
I think, yeah.
So this is not on any of the reds, but I, I would note that item number fifteen and item number twenty-six are functionally identical.
And vice mayor more. Number thirty-seven.
Yeah, they probably should be combined.
Twenty-six, thirty-seven, maybe?
I have a question on number sixteen, which is five G. I know I've been pushing this, uh, for a while. It's, it's one of the camp, campaign items that we, we had run on. And, and part of the reason for that is that, uh, at one point in time, we, we had Chris Jensen on board, who was probably the world expert on five G and architectural standards. I think a lot of work was done with that already. And, and I would just advocate that it's, it's almost, it's almost done, from what I understand. I want to verify if that's true. But a lot of the work is probably almost done there. And if we just push it across the line, we can actually get a win there for the city and for the residents.
So is that most?
Can we validate that?
Most of them, yeah.
Uh, it's the work, work program.
Attorney's office could come in on that.
If I, if I may, the work program item can be brought to council, which was the ordinance, so we can bring that.
There is already, it's a current work program item.
Correct, correct.
And the ordinance would be brought to the council when?
We could, we could do it within this year.
So, okay.
I mean, I guess, like, before we get there, we would need council's direction to keep this, um, going on, right?
So it won't be completed this year?
It can be completed this year. However, the current city work program will only take you to end of June. So I think to council member Wong's point, if you keep this for the future, um, city work program, and that will take you to the end of twenty-twenty-seven.
It's a current city work program. That means we are expecting, usually it's completed in June. Even if it's not complete in June, uh, even if there is a delay, we should complete that.
We could always, I mean, if council.
Then it doesn't need to stay on. So I'm confused.
Actually, I do have a question that's related to what, uh, the mayor, through the mayor. So last cycle's work programs, do we know what was completed? I know it was in a list earlier. Do we know what was completed of that list? And then what's remaining that is carried over? Was the expectation that would be completed in those two-year period of time? Or was it the expectation that it, it gets carried over to the next work program?
Um, so the expectation two years ago was to finish within the two years of time. And the dashboard provides a status update of each of the projects. So this one is near completion. And we have every hope that we will complete before end of the two years. However, if things happen, like I said, there are other things that are just outside of my control. If you would like security to make sure this is done, I would advocate this to be added to the next city work program as well.
Okay, and I think the mayor's point was a little bit different. I think the mayor's point is like, it should be done by June.
What I mean is, okay, if there is delay, but even if this item is not added to the, this work program for the next two years, the expectation is the item will be completed. Even, even if with some delay. Is that the right expectation? Since it's a current, it's in the current work program.
So that the expectation.
I mean, we won't just drop it by June. That's, I'm trying to clarify.
So the expectation is it's finished within the last, within the current city, the current city work program. I do not want to, um, speak for the interim city attorney. And by putting her workload ahead of us, she started a week ago. We need to bring her up to speed.
Um, I guess my question is not specific to this item. So for any work program item that's in the current work program, if we. So, for any work program item that's in the current work program, if we, if it does not get, um, it's, which is expected to complete by June this year, and in case for any reason there might be a delay, and we would expect that it will be completed?
It, it depends. So, for instance, active transportation plan is also on this current city work program. We do not expect that plan to be adopted by this June. So, if this active transportation plan does not make onto the two-year future city work program, we will not be completing that plan.
Oh, okay. So, the active transportation plan, if it's not in the next, in the next year's work program, we would drop that?
So, by June, by this June, let's say this is the act of transportation, using that as an example, ATP is not on, we're going to cut it at the end of June?
That's correct. I mean, we're going to cut it to a certain point, and we're not just going to drop all the work. Their work, I mean, right now, we're in a contract to find a consultant to start, to start the work, right? So, if it does not make it to the next year's city work program-
You're not going to look for a consultant, right?
Well, we would have to do certain amount of recognition and probably cut our loss by then.
Oh.
Um, so that will have an impact to some of the projects that are ongoing, that are currently on the city work program. And that said, some of these large projects that are getting onto the future city work program at the end of the two years, they may be facing the same, um, challenge.
But if they only have like two, three months' delay, maybe the staff would be recommending to finish them?
We could certainly come back and let you know where we are, where we are with the current city work program as the step two. There are quite a bit that is going on right now. I do see that the tree list did not make it to a lot of priority, but we're also very close with the tree list. So, we already have the consultant going out. Um, I don't know what council's priority is on the tree list. I mean, we only have so much resources, right? So, I would like to focus on the new projects, but also probably complete the, the ones that have been in the process, which is why Tina keep emphasizing on bite size. We want to make sure that we're not getting too much onto our play, so we, um, overpromise and underdeliver.
Yeah. I just want to clarify one thing. So, items that are on, that get on the city work program, we, they don't get dropped, right? So, the projects continue. Some of them do take longer, and remember, since we adopted the two-year cycle, we do a one-year check-in with council, right? So, this is going to follow the same, but we, we're not dropping the projects unless one of you or all of you indicate you don't want us to work on those.
That's good to know. I think then, the next time when we adopt this fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-seven work program, it will be helpful to have a list of the current ongoing work program, and then have some idea whether they are near completion or it's only halfway down. And then, maybe at the time, we can say, here are the list we would like to continue, so that they get added to that. So, in that case, then, it seems 5G should be in that list?
It is on that list.
This list is, should be new initiatives.
Correct. So, 5G is on our current work program, and 5G is also an item that one of you proposed to be considered tonight. Um, and I would also add that the list of existing city work program items and their completion, estimated completion dates was provided as an attachment at one of the meeting, I think at the January study session.
January.
Yeah. Okay. Great. Thank you, Consul, Vice Mayor Moore.
Thank you. So, I'm on the city work program dashboard. Uh, is the percent complete on this dashboard up to date? Um, some are pretty low, like Sign Ordinance has zero percent complete, started June third, twenty-nineteen, um, finished December twenty-second, twenty-twenty-five. Uh, that's not a lot of progress in that amount of time.
Yeah, the, the dashboard was just updated this month, or last month.
Okay. And bicycle facilities started twenty-nineteen, it'll finish this year, twenty-one percent complete. Um, so that's another, there's, there's other, other ones that are, you know, finished up and complete, um, uh, almost complete on the speed lowering and the things of that nature. So, uh, we can, so we can reference this list. So, tree list, I'm a little surprised it's showing two different things. Um, tree list, Public Works, tree list, Community Development, one at twenty-seven percent and one at sixty-two. So, if we're looking at our, at our urban forests, is there some way that we can kind of combine that with those? Are they at all similar?
I, I believe that was the understanding, that this urban forest will be a tree list two-point-oh, so that we can continue the work that Public Works and CED have started and add on to additional tasks, um, through the next two years. But, but Vice Mayor, you brought up a good point. So, um, at the beginning of this exercise back in the fall, uh, when Tina's first memo came out, we also had a list of staff recommended, uh, city work program items. Sign Ordinance was one of them. Um, however, in January, that was unprioritized by council. So, given the current status, um, the Sign Ordinance will be dropped from the future city work program.
Doesn't the council need to, uh, make that decision to drop it?
You can, I mean, we do not see it in the priority, but we can certainly, um, get a clarification from council.
Okay. Would, um, would, would funding have already been allocated for this?
Uh, there's limited funding. Um, the biggest challenge is staffing. Um, so if you remember last year, we were all hands-on deck trying to get the housing element certified, and since then, we have a slew of development project coming in. So, a project of this size, we will partner with the city attorney's office and most likely get a consultant to help us with the ordinance. So, if this is something that is still very, um, important to the council, I would recommend adding it to the city work program for the next, for the next two years.
Okay. Um, may I ask about the, um, the items that are, um, in black ink, thirteen, et cetera? Were you thinking that we would take those in the middle section, or what are we supposed to be doing with, with those? So, I know, I heard the question about, do you want to drop off the red ones at the, at the end? I know that there's, um, there's always been an issue where we've got too long of a list, and you need to find a place to, to cut, cut the list off. Did you have something in mind for where we would put the, make that?
Yeah, so if there's, um, you know, if there's consensus among council that the reds can go off, so we can start coming up to a manageable number and start dwindling from there, um, the recommendation is if, if council can focus on the items that are not highlighted, so the whites or the black, however you look at this, um, come up with five to seven out of these medium priority items. Um, and of course, you know, you've, you've had a good discussion on some of the green items, and you're already providing clarity on, for example, economic development, that can be triaged into three items. Um, that will be helpful at the end of tonight.
Okay. So, when you look at impact fees, do you feel like that's something that can be removed from item twenty, twenty-seven? Um, because I, I just wrote a very simple statement on impact fees. So, can item twenty-seven be removed? Um, because it's already up in, in the green area. It's number seven.
Yeah, so that does not need to be your five or seven that you pick out of-
Six and seven are both impact fees.
Six and seven, okay.
Yeah.
Is it? Are they? I think six, seven, twenty-seven are the same, right? Or do you feel they are different?
They can be rolled.
Through, through the mayor, the difference that, that I, that, that I had, um, yours does, um, the study, um, and mine was to then, you know, do the next step, realign the impact fees. That was the only slight, slight version. So, I'm sure that when-
So, we can combine them, these three?
Yeah, I would, I would not use the word combine, but when we refine the scope, right?
Refine the scope for six, seven, and twenty-seven for impact fees.
Yeah, and I would almost, um, flip the conversation on its head. So, instead of picking out eliminate, uh, items to eliminate from the middle portion, maybe, you know, come, if you can have a discussion on items that you want to elevate and include in the, in the green or the, um, approved list. That would be helpful.
So, focus on the red area?
I think red, if there's consensus not discussed, is fine. It's the white portion, the, the text and black that we'd like you to focus your energy on, and then, um, start narrowing down that list.
What do you mean white area? There is the-
So, sorry, the black text.
The thirteen.
Green, black, and red.
Number thirteen.
The, the no color, knowing black ink.
The black, uh-
Number thirteen to thirty-five.
Okay. So, you want direction on how to combine them, not combine?
Not combine. So, um, what I'm hoping is the discussion could be among yourselves, if you can come up with a consensus around five to seven items from that middle portion between the items thirteen to thirty-five, that you would like to be considered when we bring it back to you at the next council meeting, um, and, you know, give us direction to refine the, the project description if it needs to be tweaked.
I think, for example, number thirty-five is similar to some, is similar to-
Through the mayor, while you're thinking through that slot, uh, twenty-three and twenty-four are similar to me. Uh, really applying LOS, bringing back LOS and, uh, addressing the congestion that's going on at the moment.
Which number did you say, Councilman?
Twenty-three and twenty-four.
Twenty-three, twenty-four.
Um, through the mayor, this might be a, I don't know if we have someone from Public Works till here, but I, I thought that we already, um, had the ability to, uh, conduct the level of service study, but the, um, vehicle miles travel is what we're required to be using?
That is correct. So, the current statement day is to look at VMT. Um, we're phasing out LOS because that is the, so if you, if you live in a world of transportation, VMT and LOS, they're on the two different spectrums of the, uh, two, two different ends of the same spectrum. Uh, the current mandate for sequel analysis is to focus only on VMT. Um, so, which is why we labeled a large budget amount and also a lot of people, um, because we'll be working with a lot of attorneys and also traffic engineers and professionals to understand how to bring two ends of the spectrum into one policy. Um, as far as I know, and I'm a little out of the loop in this area, no city in California has been able to accomplish this, this far.
Um, I think the, I'd like to clarify. So, we know that the state law requires the cities to use TDM, but the, before TDM was introduced, the level of service was the standard that a lot of city used to determine the congestion level at intersections, and that's what Cupertino has been using. The state law did not forbid the city from still using level of service as a standard, so that whenever we have a project, we will still evaluate how, how much would it cause delay in intersection. So, that's the intent of this item, that the city will still adopt standards based on level of service. And when we have a development project, we will evaluate its impact to traffic, to transportation based on LOS in addition to V, V, VMT.
Through, through the mayor, more simply put, uh, we are mandated to use VMT, but we'd like to use LOS as well. Nothing has changed in the last twenty-five years to do LOS studies. You can run VMT and LOS. You're forced to use VMT, but we'd like to use LOS.
Um, through the mayor, I'd like to ask a question about that. Um, so we're, we have infill development, and the belief is that when you have infill development, that your VMT is actually decreasing. Um, so, if we were to require that level of service, um, be conducted also, are we allowed to ask for mitigations for the, for the decline in service in, um, from a level of service standpoint?
Uh, through, through the, through the mayor to, to, to the vice mayor, nothing forbids us from actually making those determinants as a independent body, uh, to, to do that on our own, uh, though we might have requirements that require VMT to be considered. But as a deliberative body, we should still be able to look at LOS as a factor, because that's what our residents care about.
Yeah. So, city attorney, can we still require mitigation measures in case the LOS, there is significant impact on the LOS from the sequel?
So, I think this is actually building a little bit far afield from identifying what you want for your work plan, but I would defer that to our Public Works or our, um, Community Development Department?
The CDD director is, um, sitting up back and shaking his head. Um, we, it, it just, in a world of planning, it, it just can't happen. Like I said, I, I've talked to many professionals. LOS and VMT, they look at different measures. To Vice Mayor's point, an info exemption, if, if, I'm not putting my fake lawyer hat on, if it qualifies for the exemption, um, even though there might be LOS impact, they're exempted. So, we cannot deny a project based on LOS if their VMT is exempt.
I think we are not talking about exemption. We are talking about mitigation measures.
So, typically, for an exemption, there's no traffic analysis.
We're asking for traffic analysis.
But there is no nexus to ask for a traffic analysis.
We can always ask for it.
But the traffic can, the city can require that, right?
Not if the, the sequoia trumps, um, our city municipal ordinance.
So, can we base our, maybe, traffic impact fees based on the LOS?
No.
Is that possible?
Uh, we can certainly have a conversation with the interim city attorney when she's back. Like I said, I, I get two directors in the back shaking his, their heads, um, profusely. Um, and, like I said, in my prior role as a planner, they are two different things that just don't work together, and sequoia trumps. And right now, the sequel mandate is to look at VMT. We can look at LOS as a nice-to-have, as a suggestive, um, recommendation, but they cannot trump over VMT.
The public needs to know what the LS impact is. That's the push.
So, we can certainly add it as a recommended study. However, like I said, mitigations will have to be focused on VMT.
Understood. But the public needs to understand that it's LOS, and whether we fight it or not is up to the city attorney.
Um, and through, through the mayor, if it, in, in the days when it was level of service, you could have a mitigation measure that could improve the width of the traffic lanes and, um, turning movements and things like that. When you're looking at VMT mitigations, you're looking at electric bicycles being provided for all the units, um, bus passes for everyone that's there. You're not looking at the same types of, um, solutions that you would have previously.
Through, through the mayor, um, the vice mayor, I, I believe the point is to show the tra, the public the impact that these measures are having through the LOS metrics, which the public understands and appreciates, not the VMT measures, which, uh, a deliberative ideological state body feels is important.
Mayor, could-
Okay, and, um, yeah?
I was just going to suggest, could we take a quick five-minute break and reconvene?
Um, okay. So, maybe you can suggest what you would like to think, us to think about for the next phase in the five minutes?
Yeah, I, I, I would like to really think about how to get focused on this middle portion of the list, so if we can just take a quick break and come back?
Okay. Okay, so we are taking five-minute break. Come back at, um-
You want a ranking?
Eight forty-three.
Through the mayor, you, you want a ranking, you want a ranking from us by now, right? Is that the idea?
No, we've already passed the ranking.
Because the middle, because the middle layer doesn't, we can't do much with it. You guys don't have, you guys don't have bandwidth for it, and is there anything we want to bring back? You're asking for revital, is there anything we want to bring in to the fold? That's about it, right? Just to be clear?
I think what I'm asking, um, is for, so the middle, uh, tier of this list right now is about twenty-three items.
Yeah, it's all big list.
If we can, yeah, and I'm, I'm, I can kind of formulate if, if I get a few minutes to see if we can come down and pare it down, so if I can just take a quick break and come back with it.
Thanks.
Alternatively, of the-
And, uh, also, I think the middle portion, half of them have ranking that's actually very close, ten or eleven or, yeah, so they are close, so I-
Maybe the way to ask that before the break is, is there something in the middle list that anybody on council really wants to advocate for? Because right now, everyone's been quiet about it. We've been, we've been, I mean, to do a recap, economic development's hot, right? And then after that, we've got a couple other pet projects everybody wants to do. Not pet, but, you know, like, important projects for people that have constituencies behind it. Is there anything anyone else is advocating hard for? If we just go down the line? Can we do that, Mayor? That might save you time.
Yeah, you, you could do that, or we could also consider just taking the twenty-three items in the middle, and, and, you know, you each get kind of five-
Just move forward.
Votes to then see if those are the items we consider. So, that would be my suggestion.
Okay.
Can we do that in the break?
Sure.
Save you some time. Mayor?
Do you, so you all have the list in front of you? If you can take, um, a few minutes, and if you, or if you want to take a break up to you, um, each of you get five votes, and if you could just select which ones of the twenty-three would be your top priorities from that portion.
One-point votes, or?
One-point votes.
One-point.
One-point votes.
Yeah.
For, pardon, which numbers?
From items thirteen through thirty-five. So those are twenty-three items.
Five one-point votes?
We get five one votes. Can we stack the five points?
Yeah, you can, yes.
Asking for a friend.
You, you stack them, you still get one item.
I think thirty-five is really not a big number, especially there are a lot of repetition. So I think we can let the staff come back with a suggested list.
Mayor, if you can give us, if everybody can just give us five out of those twenty-three, then that next staff can come, come, take that and bring it back to you.
Pardon, through, through the mayor?
In that case, I publicly plead my council members for 5G in the LOS, but that's just my, my plea, so.
We're doing both.
I know, but I have to publicly ask, otherwise I can't privately ask.
Vice Mayor, more.
Thank you. So for, for item thirteen, we, before we started this, we had a request to, for, for City Hall to be on the work program automatically. I want to remove references to City Hall off of item thirteen. This is the old, please, can we do something with Stockelmeyer House and the Bletch House? Have some, a plan? I've, I've been asking for five years now. Thank you.
And I actually think 5G shouldn't be here, because my understanding is, next time we'll have, this should be the list of new project. Next time, we will have a list of current project, their status. And then we can say, okay, this current project, a few of them we want to continue. So the 5G belongs to that?
That's one strategy, if you think 5G will be done.
And I want to say that for the red area, the Lehigh Quarry, I didn't rank that one, because I thought this, this has been an operation item that the staff has been following, what the county has been doing. It doesn't really need to be a work program item. So not ranking them doesn't mean we are not going to pay close attention to what's going on with Lehigh.
Right, and for tonight's exercise, so I think Vice Mayor, you're done with your rankings? Great. Could, could we, could we limit maybe five minutes for all of you to, to complete your rankings?
For only five out of the middle area?
Correct. From item numbers thirteen to thirty-five, pick your five.
I do have a question. Why, this is a two-year plan. Why are we limiting to only twenty items? Because I remember, as I remember last year, even in the middle of the two-year, we were, we added eleven projects.
But we started with twenty. We started with twenty existing manageable-sized project. We were able to get down half of them, so we took the opportunity to add more. We can certainly...
And those eleven can, didn't came from the council, it came from the commission.
They came from the council, I mean, council adopted the city work program. So we can certainly take all forty-nine. I guess what I'm trying to say is, I want to, again, I want to make sure that we're under-promising and over-delivering. So if we take forty-nine, I will not be able to deliver as long as the council understands.
Yeah, I think the, the hope is, right, we all want to do all of the items on this list, but realistically, what's achievable, right?
So we could have twenty, top twenty would twitch, would be in the next year's work program. But a two-year work program could still have forty items. The bottom four, twenty would be, we would understand that this is lower priority, but then they are there, so that next year, when we consider the second-year work program item, this item, this bottom twenty was, could still be candidates.
Respectfully, Mayor, that was the confusion a year ago. There was a lot of question from the council, how come there's no movement on these lower priority items? And I think council at the time removed them. So if you really want to keep them, I would recommend maybe putting them on a different list. Unfunded list, a wish list, something that we can get to maybe at the next round. But by compiling all forty with twenty that we're gonna focus and twenty that we really have no capacity, it's providing a false hope that these twenty eventually will get done.
But what you are really saying is this twenty is the next year's one-year work program?
No, two years.
Two-year with the check-in at midpoint, which, you know, depending on where the project status is of some of these items on your list, what the capacity in terms of staffing looks like, we may add items again, right, at the mid-year, like we did this last year.
And we're also bringing back some of the items that are continuing in the current city work program. Right, so there, there might be ones that we are asking you for direction, but there might be ones that we just need more time, another six months or so, another year to finish them. So you're gonna end up with twenty-plus. So we're really hoping, right now, the green areas is already about twelve. So if we get another three to five from you, and then there's probably gonna be a few that's just gonna spawn off from the list. We're gonna have a twenty solid list, and some of them are the large-scale ones. It's already a little bit more than what we can digest. In addition to finishing, some of the other projects are currently ongoing with the current city work program. So I would, I would really want to focus on, again, manageable lists that staff and council can celebrate at the end of two years.
Through the mayor, I, I respect what the city manager and city staff are trying to do here. The challenge is the unit of measure is not clear. So we choose twenty projects, and like twenty are really light versus twenty are really heavy. It's hard to tell what the workload is, so I think it's very hard for us to understand the impact to staff budgets and everything else. That's all. That's why it's very vague. Choose twenty projects, one of them you could probably do in two weeks' time in your sleep. The other one's gonna take you two years.
Fair, that's a fair, that's a fair point.
And I think that's a good point. We, we don't want to get hung up on the number, right? Twenty is roughly, that's sort of what the sweet spot is. And we obviously need to go back and look at the leading capacity staffing estimates and come back to for final adoption.
Yeah, there, there is another piece that, I think, about the commissions, what the commissions can agendize. Because I think we have been telling the commission that they can only work on items that's on the council's work program. But if we limit to a twenty-item list, some of the commission might have nothing to do for the entire year, like art, art commission. And then if they propose their own items, then they are not supposed to. So are we looking at maybe every commission should have certain tasks that they can work on?
So the commission does not work on city work program. Commission have their charters outlined in the municipal code. There, there are operational needs that go to each commission. I think what you're referring to is whether or not the commission can propose their own work program that has been done by the department. And we respectfully say no, just because we don't have the staff capacity. Some items can certainly use the commission's point of view and advocacy. We can certainly do that, and you can instruct that to staff, so we can bring certain items to the commission. For instance, bicycle pedestrian-focused study that can certainly use PPC's help. Some sort of memorial park relook of the scope, we can certainly go to Parks and Rec. Every commission gets something from the city work program, might be a bit of a stretch, however...
Yeah, so I just want to clarify. So the commissioners, even if none of the work program might fall in their area, they could still have their own discussion on, within the scope of the commission, about policies they would like to discuss, as long as they don't use staff time.
I believe that policy should be set by the city council, not commission. That's why you are the decision-making body and you're the visioning body.
I, I would bring us back to the discussion tonight. I think commissioners are advisory, and they hopefully are reaching out to you if they want items added on the work program. But if we can get back to the, the five, the voting again?
But this year, we did not ask commissioners to submit items. So they likely have nothing to work on in the next year.
Not, I, I'm not sure which ones may have been suggested by commissioners.
May I, may I suggest, we can change that policy later and, and give the commissioners the ability to suggest work plan items?
We used to do that.
We used to.
And then it went away, and then now...
But we used to, but I, but let's vote. Let's get these rankings down if, if we can, and then give it to you guys to tally.
So can we give some time specificity in terms of how much time we need to rank?
Green is twelve. That means we each get seven, I don't know, eight votes?
For this round, five, five each.
Why five?
It's arbitrary. Choose five.
Just to get us a little bit narrowed down. Let's start with five.
But you want eight twenty items, right? You want twenty total? No, my concern is if you want twenty total, that means we are going to take eight more items. If everyone votes only five, that means some might get one vote and get to be moved up.
Mayor, it's going to be, it's not a weighted vote anymore, it's just one point for each of your five items, and not all of you. I can guarantee you, not everybody's going to have the same items.
Okay.
And if you do, then that, that's a really good problem to have.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. So we'll come back at eight fifty-five. And just to remind everyone, we took another short break to, this time to rank the middle portion of the consolidated ranked list. And we asked each council member to pick five items from these twenty-three items. Based on your rankings that are in front of you, again, this will be included in, as written communications after the fact. There are about six items here that have received more than two, two or more votes. So we're recommending we move forward with this, in addition to the items already in green, as a starting point. And again, at this point, we'll be looking for council direction to take this initial list of the green items and the six items from the whitelist that you have just ranked, and come back to council at the next council meeting with some refined scope and project descriptions.
Through the mayor?
Yeah.
I, I move the recommended action from staff. I would like to ensure that the City Hall is also included on the list for the city work program.
I'll second that.
Okay, yeah, so any discussion?
Kirsten, would you conduct the voting?
Oh, I just want to make sure about the wording of the City Hall project. Does the mayor have some particular wording she would prefer?
Do you want to use...
Point of, point of inquiry, is the intent here to make sure that if, if it's...
So it's one of the work program?
It's on the work program list if it doesn't, but moves off if it becomes part of CIP? Is that what you're trying to accomplish?
So it will be CIP, but we would also like to track that as a work program? Is that the intention?
Yes, Mayor, but I'm trying to find the, where we had the wording on it.
That's an old sheet.
In the previous sheet?
Oh. So second page of the consolidated list?
Ah, the implement the previously approved 2022 council plan with the EOC migration?
I would support that.
So the subtitle is City Hall retrofit and EOC renovation plan. But I would like this to also add City Hall Annex. So City Hall retrofit and City Hall Annex renovation, including the EOC.
Mayor, which number are you on?
Number twelve and thirteen.
Thirteen from Attachment F, thank you, sorry.
From the consolidated revised top ten list.
Which is the, the top ranking middle portion, right? So are we looking at the same list? So...
That is the older list with the, the original list with items ten and eleven.
So on, strike through, the first sentence is what I'm, is that what I'm hearing?
Okay, maybe that's just, the, the title would be City Hall retrofit and the City Hall Annex renovation, including the EOC. And then the description would be implement the previously approved 2022 council plan with EOC migration.
I accept the friendly amendment, but I need my second or two also.
Second.
So that's not the version that I would accept. I would accept council member Mohan's wording and her item. I will have to find it for you. I can look for a different second or at that point?
Second. Just trying to move this.
And then there was a friendly amendment that he declined. And so that means that the floor is open for another mo, new motion.
So this is second motion?
Yes.
Make your new motion.
Okay, so I withdraw my first motion, and I'm going to have a new motion on the floor, which is the recommended action with the wording to add the City Hall item onto the list as worded by the mayor.
I will second that, but I, I'm curious to see her, what councilwoman, how councilwoman Mohan's motion is different, that's all. What was your wording? Here, I'll give you the sheet.
Can I make a friendly amendment still? I'm...
Can I just read a...
Sure.
Turn it around.
Oh, councilmember Mohan, you have something to say?
Yes, curious as to what our reading was, yeah.
He wanted me to clarify what...
Which, which councilwoman, Jerah Freeman was asking, so.
Okay, so, so my item was to determine cost and feasibility options to deal with City Hall seismic activity, safety, pros and cons of retrofit, remodel, lease temporary facility, purchase a new building, include plans for Stockelmeyer and Torrey. So basically, a, a study with feasibility options to look into all these different options.
So through the mayor, to be clear, one is to revisit a study, creating all the different options, which is council, councilperson Mohan's option. The option on the floor and the table is to use the 2022 plan. That, that's the difference. I just wanted to make sure we were all clear on that, so. Okay, that's all. Can we vote?
Can I propose a friendly amendment? So besides the top, I think, six plus twelve, that's eighteen items, right? Could we also include the rest of the blacklist for consideration? Since we have only eighteen now, so I think some of them I would like to still think about. So we will keep the top eighteen items moving forward, but let's keep the, the rest of them for the... You can, you can, it can be a separate list, but then let's keep that for, for still consideration for, for the next meeting.
So Mayor, just to clarify, are you suggesting we take the eighteen that you came up with today for consideration for the next two years and park the rest of the items on the middle portion as unfunded?
My understanding is today is not the final decision, right?
Correct.
So the eighteen is a temporary list moving forward, and the other list are still, could still be moved to be included, so.
We're here to, we're here to hear from the council, so we, I mean...
So my friendly amendment is that in the next council meeting, we will still have all the lists except the red ones.
And some of the black ones.
And all the black ones.
And then the, all the, all the black ones. And we have, we have the top eighteen and the rest of the black ones for consideration.
If that's okay with the rest of the council?
If the motion maker and seppendor approve this amendment?
Ask Vice Mayor.
Pardon, so it would be kept separate, because I'm personally disinclined of having a really long list. This has been an issue in the past where we've had too many. So I want to make sure that we had a, a really good reason why we would want to move some of these ones or zeros up.
Because today is not the final decision, so I hope to keep the options open.
Okay, as long as it's clear that we've got the upper list having the votes, and those are just optional items, if you want to look at those again, that can be done.
I'll second that, Vice Mayor.
Okay.
Call the question.
Clear?
Can we call the question?
Could I just add a clarification question here? So the staff will go back and refine our estimates and project scope that council is providing direction to staff tonight for the eighteen.
May I ask one helpful column? May, may I ask one helpful column? Just percentage complete that you had from before? That will help us if someone's were existing projects?
For...
If some of them were existing projects? Like you have one that has ninety-nine percent, the other one like five G was like eighty percent or something like that? I think it's on the Power BI index, so.
Yeah, we can provide information from the dashboard.
From the dashboard. I mean, you have a beautiful dashboard there, so.
Okay, so just to clarify, the motion is to approve the top eighteen and keep the others in abeyance in a separate part?
May I call the question?
Okay, let's vote.
May I just clarify the motion, Mayor? I have, uh, so this is from item number thirteen from the consolidated and revised top-ten list. More moved, Wong seconded, this is a new motion, uh, to strike through the first sentence from number thirteen. The title will be City Hall retrofit and City Hall annex renovation, including the EOC. And the description would be to implement the previously approved 2022 council plan with EOC migration. And then your friendly amendment, Mayor, was to, in addition to the top eighteen items, also include the remaining black items in black for consideration?
Yeah.
Okay. And then, uh, and then, um, also the initial, the initial part of the motion was to, um, move this, the recommended action from staff? Is that accurate? Yes, okay.
So when will this come back to the...
March eighteenth.
March eighteenth, okay. Okay, um, we can vote now.
Can we call the question?
Councilmember Frue?
No.
Councilmember Mohan?
Uh, no.
Councilmember Wong?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Moore?
Aye.
Mayor Chow?
Aye.
The motion carries with Frue and Mohan voting no.
Okay. Yeah, and I'll collect those, um, ratings from you. Um, thank you again for staying with us through this process, and again, a quick refresher on staying on track with priorities. I think we've been talking about this throughout the evening, but again, as you have, um, all participated in city work program, it is a process, right? There's a lot of adjustments, there's estimates, discussions that we have to have in order to have a final list, um, delicate balance as shown here. So, um, you know, we've talked about snowball effect. We have now made a, a, a lot of progress just in one evening. We have a sort of, have a semblance of a list that we'll bring forward to you on the eighteenth, um, and the city manager and I will get busy with the executive team in terms of determining what are the estimates that are looking, um, you know, feasible, and we'll bring those forwards. I'm gonna breeze through this one again. I think we've seen this in the past, so, um, no need for discussion on how and what, um, rises up to adding items mid-cycle. Um, here's a quick refresh on, refresher on commitments. Um, we will apply our technical knowledge. We're gonna go back, clarify project descriptions as the direction that you provided today. Um, we'll make sure all programs, projects, and activities are aligning, um, and we're going to build council direction based on the strategic vision that you have adopted tonight into all of the budget and work plans, and we'll report progress periodically. Um, and at this point, we are at the end of the workshop, and, um, you know, here we are today, we're going to go back, prepare the workshop report, prepare further written communication, distribute that, and then March through June is the process when we will return to council for the formal adoption of the work program for the next two years, and July one is when this new work program will, um, be implemented. Um, and I just, from my side, want to thank council for your partnership and for your participation and collaboration tonight. It's been an amazing process, and, um, I'm really glad of the progress we're making. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Pamela for some closing comments.
That'll be a good night from me, and thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you, staff, for a, a tremendous job and coordinating all the ranking, and things, the process has been very smooth, uh, because of all of your hard work, and thank you. So now the meeting is adjourned.